Please call the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnek. Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbert.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
If you would, please stand and join Deputy Mayor in the flag slot. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is presentation. ST Rapid Bus Transit Update. Luke Lamond, the Government and Community Relations at Sound Transit. Ms. Lamond, thank you for coming tonight. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, for having us this evening. As the Mayor said, Luke Lamond from Sound Transit. Actually joined by my colleague Paul Cornish, who is the Bus Rapid Transit Program Director. So, we are going to walk through a project update. It's been some time since maybe the body as a whole has gotten an update on the project. The Mayor and Deputy Mayor are quite involved, so we wanted to take a run-through and then have an opportunity to answer some questions at the end.
Awesome, great, thank you. As Luke said, I am Paul Cornish, I'm the BRT Project Director, and this is both the 522 BRT and the 405 BRT, which is the BRT program. They're intimately linked over in Bothell, where we're going to have the two lines come together over on the campus. I'm very glad to be here today. Today I want to cover our community and stakeholder engagement, give you a project update, where we're at, tell you what we've heard, and talk a little bit about the next steps for the project. So, we've had a series of open houses back in May and June, and these were for the entire 522 BRT from Shoreline to Woodinville. We have one at Bothell, one at Lake Forest Park, and one at UW-Bothell Cascaded College. And right now, we're in the middle of having specific public workshops at each city. And the way we do those is we have one in the afternoon from about 1:00 to 3:00, and the one in the evening to let folks work for whatever works best for their fair schedule. And I'd like to thank Rob for coming to both of the Kenmore workshops and kicking those off and having some nice conversation with the folks there. And what we're looking to do here is really get down to the drawings, look at some maps, look at some lines on an aerial, and kind of work much more closely with folks about specific interests and concerns and comments and suggestions that they have, real specific to their neighborhood and how the project impacts their neighborhood. So, you may have seen this schedule before. What's nice, if you notice, is kind of shading. The shading's working its way from left to right, because that means those events are behind us. And what I'd like to point out on this slide is the orange bar on the top is a series of ongoing briefings, updates, workshops. I went to the I Love Kenmore Days, that was a great event. I talked to, at our booth, we talked to almost over 100 people, which is great. It was really good to see the amount of community interest in the BRT in Kenmore, so that was a great day. We have continual coordination with the inter-agency group. This is a working group of a staff member from every city along the corridor. They get together every month. We work with them to do some real technical aspects. So then, when we meet again with the City Managers Group, or actually the Elected Officials Group, with Mayor Baker and Deputy Mayor Heiburger, both on that. Mayor Baker is a ST representative. So, when they bring their information to you, we've actually been able to have some technical work on a staff level. I think that is proving to be pretty useful. And what all this is leading to is going to the Board first quarter 2019. With here, we've taken the ST3 project as it was defined, and we've tweaked it, made it as best as we can, as efficient as we can, and then we'll ask them to move forward with that project into conceptual engineering.
And I think, maybe before we move on from that graphic, I think it's helpful to note that, you know, this really shows the stacked nature of all of the different touches that we're really working to have with your community and the community along the entire corridor. Because as we keep saying, as it goes in the central part, eastern part, western part, so it goes for performance along the entire corridor. You'll see in one of our upcoming slides, we've got some of the high-level objectives for the project that we're looking at. So, we've got all of these different touches stacked here with differing intervals culminating in the Sound Transit Board making a decision which will move the project into what we call conceptual engineering and environmental review, which will just then trigger a whole new round of touches and engagement with the community. So, this first phase, getting in front of the Sound Transit Board, is a really big deal for us in delivering this project fast. That's the thing that we heard from the region when this ballot measure was passed. But then, we've still got a lot of work to do after that, that we're going to keep coming out here and talking to you, talking to your people, and keeping some of these groups engaged.
Great, thank you, Luke. That was absolutely spot-on. And that's what really leads to this next drawing, which you may have seen before. This is the 522 BRT. On the left side of the page will be the future South Shoreline Station, which would be built as part of the Linderlink Extension along Shoreline, Seattle, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, Bothell, out to Woodinville. And this really shows how this is a system, and we have lots of discussions at the smaller groups, talking about, well, can we add like another bus stop here or there? And we're really not looking to add additional stops, only refine the ones that we propose, because it is a system, and every change in one city impacts the residents of another city. So, we really like to keep in mind that this is an actual system from the head to the toe of it, and keep it as efficient as we can. That said, this map, what we say in the pink, the pink lines are where we have proposed improvements. On the left side of the page, on 145th, we're looking at some Q-jumps, which allow buses to bypass traffic at the intersections. We're also looking at another alternative, which we talked about at the elected leadership group, which is actually to repurpose or take two of those outside lanes and turn them into transit and right-turn-only lanes. And this is part of the, one of the three scenarios we're looking at. We're going to do the traffic analysis, work with the state and the city in Shoreline to see if this is something we do. But I like to talk about that, because this was actually a pretty good discussion at the elected leadership group, so I'd like to mention that. The rest of the pink lines that you've seen, Lake Forest Park, is to add the business lane on what I call the lakeside of 522, the bat landings this other way. There are no business and transit lanes in Kenmore, because Kenmore has built their business and transit lanes, and we thank you very much for taking care of that part for us. And as you go down to Bothell, there's a couple more pink lines. And the first one of those is actually a project we're currently negotiating with the city of Bothell to build for us. It's their Stage 3 project, if you're familiar with that. It's a project from the Wayne Curve out to the city boundary. They're finishing the design of it. They've been acquiring the right-of-way, and then we will go and have a Sound Transit find that. And this has always been the plan. This is how we built the Wayne Curve Bat Lanes a few years ago at Bothell, so I think that should work out well, and that will help get a big part of the pink line off this map, because we'd like to turn that all to orange if we could. And then each city along Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, and Bothell will also get a 300-stall parking garage, and we're currently looking at where to put those garages. So, again, we're looking at, this is a corridor. The key is to get the transit speed and reliability up. We want to minimize the impacts to properties. That's why we're looking at various options to the roadway, how do we achieve the project goal, and minimize the project footprint as best we can. And of course, traffic is a big part of that. Non-motorized access, how folks can get to the system is a big part. If folks don't want to have to drive, you know, have them be able to bike, ride their bike, or walk to the station, or walk from the station to wherever they need to go via sidewalk or pedestrian aspect. So, that's a big part of the work, coordinating with everybody, with each city's, their long-range plans, the state's long-range plans. It's a lot of coordination going on, which is great. That's the big reason we have the inter-agency group, because they really help us keep those plans coordinated. And then, of course, we work with King County Metro and Community Transit to talk about how do we have an integrated transit system that complements each other and doesn't compete with each other. And finally, one of my major concerns as Project Director is actually the scope and budget of this. So, when we go to the Sound Transit Board next spring, here's the project, here's what we like to do. We like to accomplish this with the budget that we have. So, that's my personal overarching goal of this project, is to do that. So, what are the key considerations in Kenmore? So, Kenmore has the parking garage, and you have two BRT stations. So, the representative stations are at the Park and Ride, which is about 73rd, I think that's the cross-street, and at 65th slash 68. Now, there are two additional items, two alternative stops, one at 61st and one at 80th, that we've been considering, and this is part of the public outreach, one of these conversations, you know, what works for folks, what's going to work the best for the city of Kenmore. So, we've been having those conversations, and they're also looking at, where should this parking garage be? The representative site is expand that Park and Ride, but we're also looking at potentially doing something with Lake Point down at 68 and 522. So, we've got a couple alternatives there. And what we're looking to do is actually get through all this by the end of the year to move forward to the Board, and say, here's what we'd like to move forward with. So, what we've heard in Kenmore, again, lots of support for better and safer options for walking across 522 and along 522 and getting to our stations. There's been a lot of support for additional parking. We get this question a lot at Sound Transit about how much park can we build, which we don't build, but we get a lot of this conversation in Kenmore. There's a whole lot of discussion about this existing ST 522. This item probably comes up more than anything in all the plugings, in all the cities, because the 522 goes through all the cities. And typically, we don't refine our routes until two years before, like we open a light-rail station, and two years prior, we start the outreach process to how do we want to integrate this transit. And we'll do the same stuff for all the local buses, including the 522, although we are heading pretty much towards, we're going to keep the 522 as a peak hour service, and probably not so much in the off-peak hours. But we've heard a lot about this. I love the support for the 522. I wrote it up here today, it's a great route. So, we do know that we'd like to keep it for the peak hour, and then as we get closer to opening the BRT in 2024, then we start refining these routes and find out really what's the best way to overlap the BRT and local bus service to serve the residents of Kenmore and along 522. So, next meetings, we have an ELG meeting, like the leadership group meeting, in November and December. We have a second round of community open houses in early 2019. The inter-agency group and the City Managers Group, of which Rob is a very active participant, they would just continue to meet. Those are the solid bars that I had on the map before. And then, again, we'll get to the Sound Transit Board first quarter of 19. Here's everything we've heard, here is how we'd like to refine the ST3 project, and have them consider us moving forward into the next phase of the project. So, as a real quick, high-level overview of the project, I do like to say it's been fun working on the Kenmore part, the amount of involvement that we've been getting, the people who've come to open houses, it's actually been a very positive, very fun relationship, and we're looking forward to continuing this and bringing Kenmore the best BRT service that we can.
And I would also offer that we truly are midstream here in the analysis, so we want to come out both to you and to your communities and let folks know what it is we're analyzing and why. And then, we want to come back and check in and make sure that, okay, based on what this analysis has shown, and based upon our mutually agreed-upon goals and objectives, X alternative may meet that best, we'd like to move that forward. What do you think? So, there will be, I just want to be clear, additional check-ins between now and the Sound Transit Board in first quarter 2019, but we wanted to come here and just take the opportunity to do a quick check-in and let you know where we're at. That would be, glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Smith.
Thanks to both of you for coming tonight, I appreciate it. And I have a couple of questions. One, I know speed and getting this up and running is a priority for you, it sounds like, and you had mentioned it's fast, and also, Paul, you had mentioned that when you change one thing, it affects, in one city, it affects everything else in the corridor. And so, I would ask that, going forward, as much as you can try to not diminish the automobile use on 145th, I know one of the options is a significant streamline of that, and I think that would compromise the integrity of the entire corridor and the entire function, because the bottom line is you're still going to have automobiles, they're not going away. And I realize part of your priority is the transit, and maybe that's the majority of your priority, but just from a corridor perspective, that's really critical for us. And so, I would ask that you do everything you can to enhance that corridor on 145th. It's the final link to the station, and it's just, it's critical. And then, the only other thing I wanted to ask you, since Kenmore has already invested significantly in the infrastructure of our corridor of 522, is when you're going through these decision-making processes about what areas get higher level of infrastructure need more than others, how does, is there any benefit to Kenmore that is over and above just the general corridor need by the fact that we have already had our taxpayers pay a significant part to increase the safety and the infrastructure in that segment of the corridor? And knowing that, and knowing that it will cost less in our city because of that, is there a possibility that we can have a higher level of investment on the connections to the park-and-ride lot, whether it's overpasses, underpasses, or some kind of other safety infrastructure investment?
That's a great question, and part of when we look at, particularly the non-motorized access to the stations with their park-and-rides, we'll look at all the needs throughout the corridor with what we have, and have to make some decisions, and this is kind of a great use of the inter-agency group. But that's actually a very good point, is that Kenmore has actually done a lot of the homework for this, and I will bring that up in their negotiations or discussions of how that might should be built, to point out that, you know, Kenmore has stepped up to this.
Right, and I appreciate hearing that, because what it does is it actually punishes us financially, paying twice, because we're proactive in addressing our needs in our city, and I think that's a vital part.
Yeah, and I would say that with our investments, we want to, you know, get the most bang for our buck, if you will. And, you know, where a city or a jurisdiction has made a significant investment already, you know, you've potentially created a space where, you know, we would be able to get maybe that highest ridership bump or that highest ease of access. So, I think the two really do work together. But, yeah, we'll make sure and take that in consideration.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor, appreciate it. And thank you, Paul and Luke, for coming, really appreciate it. Good presentation. I just want to mention two things. I want to reiterate what Councilmember Smith said about 145th. That's two cities away, but we care deeply about it, because the whole experience gets compromised if 145th is all jammed up. So, I think if it's not the most important thing to us, it's one of the top two or three things most important to us, is how 145th functions. And what was my other comment? I guess that's it. I thought I had two things. Sorry about that. Great, thanks, Rob.
Councilmember Shrubnek.
Just one thing. I've heard from folks in the community who believe that the bus stop, for example, at 61st is going away somehow, and I happen to ride the bus and take that bus from that bus stop almost every day. And so, I'm fairly sure that that is not the case, for not the least of which it services other buses. We've got two different metro buses that go to that stop that are unrelated to this effort. So, I'd just like to kind of get your confirmation of, you know, am I correct that those bus stops are not going away? There'll still be some buses going to them?
That is actually a good point, and that's a point that we heard at the last workshop, because what we have been showing on our maps is here's the BRT stops, and we don't show the existing stops and the existing stops that will remain. And so, this rumor, or this feeling, it sort of started that, that's all the stops we're going to have, and so that was a big lesson to learn, and thank you for reminding us that we're going to put, we're going to start showing, here's the existing bus stops, and here's the buses that are going to stop, because when I thought about, yeah, if you look back, it looks like there's just these. So, that's actually a very good point, that we've already taken to heart, is to actually show that and show how this is a system and how we're going to interface with the local buses.
Yeah, and it's good to, I think it's incumbent upon us to always remind folks, like Paul said, so, we're going to have this new bus service that we're excited about. It's going to be every 10 minutes, all day long, not just peak, off-peak, but there will also still be local bus service, Sound Transit Express, as well as King County Metro. I won't speak on their behalf, but anecdotally, this is going to be a corridor with a very high level of transit service, which is very exciting. I don't think that, to Paul's earlier point, we can say exactly what it's going to look like. We're still trying to fit that together. But, yeah, there's going to be multiple layers of service here that will hopefully be working really well for you people.
Did you think of your other?
It was actually Councilmember Shrubnek's thought. I think just managing expectations about BRT and what it is by definition. So, to kind of oversimplify it, Bus Rapid Transit is not a bus. It's a train that happens to have rubber tires. I know I'm kind of oversimplifying it, maybe exaggerating a bit, but you kind of need to think of it that way. You have to think of it differently than regular bus service. Bus Rapid Transit tries to simulate a train as much as possible without actually being a train, which means less frequent, or less stops, but more frequent service.
Right, exactly. And the other characteristics, like we're looking for all off-board fare payment, like light rail, you tap your card or buy your ticket, you can come and go out of any door. We'll be looking at that for the BRT and some other of those characteristics of a train replicated on the bus.
Yes, Councilmember Marshall.
To follow up with the 145th questions, I'm not sure that I heard, forgive me if I didn't, any, at least somewhat more specific ideas you had to protect the traffic flow or to avoid the scenarios that people were concerned about at 145th when you begin making the improvements.
So, we're looking at, so questions like, what are some of the things we're looking at on 145th? So, we're looking at the repurpose lane option, which is converting those outside lanes to a business transit lanes. We're looking at what's called the hybrid option, and this is, we took the Sound Transit 3 project, and that was roughly those pink lines, I showed you where the Q-jumps are. And the city of Shoreline, they've actually done a plan as well, and theirs is a little more extensive than what we're proposing. So, we have what we call the hybrid plan, which is looking at between what we need to accomplish and what the city needs to accomplish, is there a hybrid between those two? So, those are the three scenarios we have, ST3, the repurpose lane, and then the project in the middle. And those are the things that we're running the intersectional level of service analysis on, doing all the traffic work, and see what that does. So, those are the three, currently, those are the three alternatives that we're looking at.
But to be clear, there's one option that we're looking at that would convert those general-purpose lanes to the transit-only lanes. And the reason we're looking at that, I mean, I think we should be very clear that we need to make sure and do our homework on any of the possible options out there and see what the analysis shows, because one thing that we always want to be very sensitive of, it's a factor, it's not the only factor, has to do with right-of-way acquisition. And we have heard folks say, try and minimize, every foot counts.
Every foot counts.
Every foot counts is a mantra we hear a lot. So, in order to respond to that request to, hey, try and like have as little property acquisition as possible, we're looking at this, but we need to take into account, I mean exactly what a number of councilmembers have said, if it adversely affects, you know, traffic impacts and completely brings that corridor to a screeching halt, that's not what we're looking to do. We're looking to make the system more efficient, not only make it work for buses and nothing else. So, as we said, we're doing the full traffic analysis, and we'll come back with the results, and we'll be running it through, you know, those kind of multiple stacks that you saw on that graphic to see if it might work.
Councilmember Smith.
So, I just want to add, and I mean this with significant respect, but, you know, the traffic, I mean, when you talk about property acquisition, if you're putting a light rail through a neighborhood, it's never an issue. When you're committed to that route and serving that population base, you put it through. It's because it's what you do. And we rallied a lot of people to support ST3, and we did it on the understanding that there would be a corridor that functioned adequately. And so, the amount of property acquisition in the 145th corridor doesn't even compare to the property acquisition that's going on throughout the entire ST3 system. So, I understand your argument, I just, I think it doesn't hold water relative to our population base here in our community. Thank you.
And if I could echo that, so, it's easy for us to say, because it's not our city, but, I mean, there's going to be thousands of people needing that service every day, and so it's really about the needs of the many versus the needs of the few. And trying to accommodate the needs of the few could significantly hamper the effectiveness of this service.
Yeah, we agree. We want to accommodate the needs of the many.
Councilmember Curtis.
Just a related comment. So, along with 522 on our part, we've already done the property acquisition, we've already made the streets wider, we've had those debates of where this sidewalk's going to be and where this electricity component's going to be. So, we know there are challenges with making roads wider.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I also want to acknowledge a friend of the city who has been there, working with us through the ST3 process, who now works for Sound Transit, Sarah Langton. Sarah has been a very, very important part of the team, and I did want to recognize her. So, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Northeast Side Mobility Project with King County Metro. And our own Kenmore resident and Inglemore High School graduate, Ellie Williams, is with them, so we're excited to hear from you guys.
Thank you very much. And just to introduce ourselves and give the framework for why we're here tonight, I'm Grace Carlson, I'm the East Side Service Planner for King County Metro. I'm accompanied by our graduate intern this year, very happy to have Ella Williams as part of our team. And Emily Kish is also a Transportation Planner with our Communication, Community Connections, excuse me, Community Connections Group. And they have worked hand-in-glove with us in looking at this project and helping us create a very comprehensive mobility network that goes beyond just fixed route and buses. If you all recall, I came and met with you, probably was in May, which is at the time that we re-engaged this project. Going back a little bit in time, you all likely remember that in 2017, Metro and Sound Transit worked together to look at how we could facilitate and expedite cross-Lake Washington traffic, the bus traffic. And we got a lot of feedback from the public at that time, and just like Paul said, we took a lot of it to heart. For example, there was a lot of concern about safety and access if the buses that come across the lake were to transfer to the Link Light Rail at UW. So, there's been a major partnership effort to improve the capital assets of that area. I'm not going to go into that tonight, but that, I think it's a better product for the passengers that are going to be transferring to Link Light Rail in the future, and it's because of the citizen involvement and the public engagement that we were able to do that. So, that was in 2017, so we had to work to get some of those kinks worked out, and we re-engaged the project in May of this year. I came and introduced you to it and told you that our first step in June would be to talk to people in all five jurisdictions about about what they felt were the needs and priorities for mobility on the Northeast Side. So that, because just like the presentation we just heard, there's some really exciting transit technology that's coming online into this area. And this, the time is right to prepare a foundation so that the fixed route and mobility services that King County Metro can offer will help your community members integrate with that high-speed, high-capacity transit. So Ella's got the background slide up here. That kind of goes over what I just said. We, you know, for obvious reasons, we're considering the change because there has been so much going on with growth and job expansion in our area. You might recall, it's something I talked to you about in May, but we knew that the Montlake Freeway Station would be closing at some point due to the 520, SR520 Rest of the West construction. We just didn't know when. So shortly after we started into the project, we learned that it's going to close in March of 2019. That is a very vital connecting piece for people coming from east to the University District and back from the University District to the East Side. And it's going to close on March, in March of 2019, and there's not an alternative stop. So WashDOT and Metro and Sound Transit have been working to come up with a solution that will help at least build, bridge the gap between March and when the next service change could happen in September. The other major contributing factor is that the downtown transit tunnels in downtown Seattle will be closing to bus traffic also in March of 2019. So they'll only serve the trains, which will be great because it means the trains will be more reliable and the frequency will be more dependable. But it also means that those buses are going to surface, and they're going to be competing for the same roadways that cars and bicycles and pedestrians and freight trucks and what have you are competing for. And we're, again, Metro and Sound Transit are working together to make sure that we can invest as much resources as possible so that we don't lose span of service, so that we don't lose frequency. But it's, it certainly is an uncertain condition. We're looking into the future and trying to predict what might happen. And we'll probably most likely have to see when we get there. Next slide. So in June, as I said, we went out and we polled, we had four open houses. We talked to thousands of folks, both through their contributions to online surveys as well as meeting them in public at farmers markets and street fairs and the open houses that we had. And much like what we heard in 2017, people said, we need reliability and dependability in the services that Sound Transit and Metro provide. We have really unacceptable levels of service on the weekends and nights because the service often spans out to an hour or more, or it cuts off at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, just as people are trying to get home. So they said the span of service and the frequency is also very important to us. And that it, whatever changes we would propose, we'd be looking forward to these new transit technology improvements and try to set the stage so that they can work together when the time is right. Next slide. So the proposal now that we're taking back to the public, is opening up on October 16th, is we are, the 255 is the centerpiece of the proposal. And the 255 is a frequent all-day, seven-day-a-week bus service right now that comes across from the Northeast Side across Lake Washington, down into downtown Seattle through the transit tunnel. As I said, with Montlake Freeway Station closing and the downtown transit tunnel, this, we feel is a good time to look at trying to help the 255 continue to bring as many passengers to their ultimate destinations as possible, as quickly, frequently, and reliably as possible. So the 255 is the centerpiece. And what we're proposing is that the northern termination point would be at Totem Lake for the 255, and the southern, western termination point would be at the UW Link Light Rail Station. And the reason I call that the centerpiece is because we're able to harvest service hour savings both from the north end of the 255, as well as the west and south end. And we want to put, reinvest those savings back into this side. So starting on October 16th, we'll be taking this network proposal out to the public and asking for feedback. And we want to hear from everybody. I mean, we heard from over 1,000 folks in the first phase. I hope I hear from 10,000 folks in this phase, because it's going to be very important. There hasn't been any kind of major restructure or modification to your service in almost two decades. And with what we heard tonight, and the Link, and the East Link Light Rail coming in, we know that we need to do better. And this is the time that we can take advantage of the resources and the need. Next slide. I'm actually going to skip to the next slide because I talked about this already. And I'm going to turn this portion of the presentation over to my colleague Emily Kish to talk about the Community Connections pieces that we're integrating.
Hi there. I'm Emily Kish. So I work at the Community Connections Program at Metro. And that program allows Metro to work with local jurisdictions to really understand transportation needs of the community. And then we deploy alternatives to alternative mobility services to the fixed route network, particularly to address transit gaps. So areas where there may not be the land use or the density to support our traditional sort of bus network. And so as Grace mentioned, we work with several jurisdictions in the Northeast Side to understand the transportation needs, hearing from the communities and our Mobility Board. So we are proposing two different services in the Northeast Side. So we are proposing two community rides. So these are reservation-based services that serve a service area instead of along a route. And so a person makes a reservation either online or by phone, and they do that either two hours before their desired trip time or up to 30 days in advance. And a vehicle comes and picks them up and then takes them to any destination within that specified service area. We are proposing two community rides, one in Kenmore, Juanita and Finn Hill, and then one also in Bothell and Woodinville. The other service that we are proposing is called a community van. This is a pre-arranged recurring or one-time group trip for residents. Volunteer drivers pick up riders at pre-arranged stops along the way to the trip destination. Trips are arranged by a community transportation coordinator. Riders pay a standard metro fare, and the volunteer driver rides for free. This service we're actually proposing in South Kirkland. We already have a community transportation coordinator in Kirkland, working with us on a pre-existing project that you guys may be familiar with, between the cities of Kirkland and Kenmore. And so those are the two different services that we're proposing through this project.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. And since you mentioned the Mobility Board, I also wanted to thank and recognize Gareth Jeffers, who's going to be speaking, I think, a little bit later. She's a member of our Mobility Board, our Citizen Advisory Group, that's representing some of the interests of Kenmore community. So I think we've got that up there. This is a, this is a very high-level overview of the network. And what it's trying to tell us is that the colored lines show how we're connecting major destinations, urban hubs, along the Northeast Side. And if you look at the legend, the boxes on the, on the far right-hand side of the page, the colors match, the color boxes match the line, and it will give you an idea of what kind of frequency and span of service the proposed network will have. I also had attached a couple of other maps to your presentation in advance. One was showing the current, the current mobility services that are available all over in the Northeast Side, and then a more detailed description of the proposed restructure that we're going to be opening up, as I said, to public comment on October 16th. So I know there's, there's been some questions and comments since I reached out to staff partners about a week ago to fill them in on where we were and where we were headed next. So I want to make sure I have enough time to address any questions or comments that you all might have. Do you want to just go to the last slide?
Questions? Councilmember Shrubnek?
This may only peripherally be related to your, to your presentation, but you did mention at the beginning the closing of the bus tunnel to buses.
Yes.
Or transit tunnel to buses. And, you know, given the presentation that we just had and the intent of BRT, I'm curious where that fits in, since it is, as Rob said, basically trying to be a reliable train with reliable times. It just happens to have rubber wheels. And it seems like if they're going to have to travel on the street, on top, not in the tunnel, and all of the other buses are also doing that, you're really going to compromise the ability of BRT to function as it's designed.
Is the Bus Rapid Transit coming into downtown Seattle? I wasn't aware that it was.
No, it's going to 145th. Bus Rapid Transit goes.
Oh, and we've got the light rail. Oh, so there'll be no, there's no, there'll be no more, because there are existing BRT lines that do go into downtown. 522, you're right, would not.
522 will continue.
The only, the only type of Bus Rapid Transit that we currently have in our area is the Metro Rapid Ride.
Right.
Services. And those currently, no, none of the Rapid Rides are using the transit tunnel at this time.
Right. But my point is, if all of the buses that currently use the tunnel are now on top, that will clog up the streets such that the BRTs that are trying to move won't be able to move in the way they're designed. But you're right, 520, the, our BRT for our area wouldn't be going to downtown, but there will be ones that still do, presumably.
It's actually the East Side buses that will be terminating in the U District, and they will go to light rail. And that's one of the big changes that is happening.
The 255. Only the 255 will reorient. In this proposal, only the 255.
Yeah, but that's the only one for you. I'm talking about other ones that are in Redmond, Issaquah. And there's other ones that are going to be, I think, I think they changed that. Pardon?
I could be wrong. I think they changed that proposal. I think they only have one bus that's terminating, and the rest of them are still going in.
That's right. You're right. It's, it's hard to follow because this has gone on for so long. But in 2017, we had somewhere on the order of, I think, 20 routes.
Right.
Between Metro and Sound Transit that we were looking at reorienting to the UW. When it's all said and done, only the 255 in our proposal is set to go.
Is it going to become a two-seat ride?
Right. And I don't know if this directly answers your question, Councilmember, or not, but that was another concern. When we knew that the transit tunnel was going to close, we just didn't know exactly when. We were kind of hoping that it would happen in September so it could at least synchronize with our efforts here. The city and Metro and Sound Transit and WashDOT have worked together to create bus-only streets in downtown Seattle. So Third Avenue is going to become a transit-only street. For buses that are going northbound and coming back over to the East Side, they're going to use a more efficient corridor with, using the fifth, sixth pathway, starting in March. So we're going to start implementing some of these changes as far as downtown bus traffic is concerned, because we want to give them a priority, since they're carrying, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of passengers in and out of the city every day. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilmember Vanuski and then City Manager.
Can you bring up your map of what's changing in Kenmore?
Yes.
And why you're changing it and why you made your decisions there?
Sure. Okay, great. So I think just keeping it at the upper part there is fine, because that shows Kenmore. So if you look at the, there's a brown route that kind of, brown line route that kind of starts at the Kenmore Park and Ride and winds its way down along the western edge of Kenmore before it turns east at 144th, is that right?
141st.
141st, excuse me. And if you look where you see the dots and the dotted line underneath that, that's currently where Route 234 and 244 go today. And those dots represent the number of passengers that board at those stops each day. Part of what we did in proposing the restructure is we sought to maintain any loss of service to a minimum, and where we knew that there was going to be loss of service, to try to find other solutions or other possibilities, which is what Emily was speaking to with the community ride and the community van. The new alignment that's being proposed that you see there actually came out of the public feedback that we got in the May and August timeframes, when we went out and did the Phase 1 and Phase 2. And I can tell you that apparently Vastir University has been asking for more service for quite some time. But also towards the southern end where that, that route then makes the eastern turn onto 141st, there's quite a few multifamily developments there as well as shopping. And so the public that we were speaking to when we went out in May and in, excuse me, in June and August, was saying that they felt that that area was underserved and they wanted to see some kind of service go in there. Now, having said that, this is just a proposal. It's nothing set in concrete. We, like I said, I certainly want tens of thousands of people to comment and give us feedback about this. And that will help us to determine ultimately what routes get realigned or combined or modified as part of the final restructure.
Because you're, oh, okay, that's good. And yeah, definitely listen to the feedback because I know you're taking away a connection to the high school there by your restructure. And those may not be people who would be using the community van and all that. And so just something to be aware of.
Well, we're, yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
Have you thought about a circulator that ran only during peak times to pick up that, that area that is being abandoned?
That's an interesting idea. The community van and the community ride actually would, would serve in that sort of a purpose.
Right. But that's volunteer drivers, where a circulator route would be.
The community ride actually is a paid driver service, and that would be available during the weekdays. I think we're proposing seven, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM right now, or that's what we're looking at. And that's just sort of that entire sort of, I don't know what color you would call that.
Bay shaded area.
Yeah.
So I mean, but that's something people would call.
That's true. It is a reservation-based.
But nothing that just did the route.
Right.
And I was thinking something that did the route during the peak times.
That's true. I think the benefit of community ride is it provides you with more flexibility in terms of where you want to go. So you wouldn't necessarily have to go on a specified route. You could go anywhere within that service area, and you can decide when you want to go. So you do have to make a reservation, but you can decide when you want to go and where you want to go.
Right. But then the fare would not be any increase because.
It would just be a standard fare. Yeah.
It would just be a transfer.
And if you were taking that ride to board transit, it would just be a transfer at that point.
Yep.
Okay. City Manager?
And what are you doing to notify the folks that are going to be affected by that change?
Well, the, there'll be rider alerts at all the bus stops.
Okay.
Any that are affected by any proposed changes, but also any stops along the route where we have the highest volume of riders. Most of our transit riders subscribe to either text or email alerts, so we'll notify them that way. I spoke with your community relations person today. Is it Becky?
Becky Range.
Yes, yes, thank you. She was very helpful during the first two phases of helping to get the word out. We're also, we have paid advertisements that we're going to be putting out in the area and using social media and what have you, so.
Okay. And then can you give us an update on Rapid Ride and when it's going to be coming to Kenmore?
I've not prepared to do that tonight, but I would love to come back at a future date.
Okay, we're hearing through the grapevine 2025.
That would be great, wouldn't it?
It's a little later than we thought, but.
Okay. Shoot, I was going to get that answer wrong. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Obviously, I'm not working directly on that project yet, but I hope to be when, when things get finalized for it.
Deputy Mayor?
So the community van or the, is that something that minors can use and reserve red zone?
I think community vans 16 and over, and then community ride, there's no age limit.
Okay. Because my biggest concern is just with the high school students, if they're staying late or something like that. Thank you.
Community ride, they would definitely be eligible.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Hope to see you again soon.
No, thank you for the information.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm going to leave some open house flyers and some feedback forms on the table, too.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And this is something that we have recognized every year. And this year, we've expanded it a little bit. Sorry, there's an issue tonight. I'm not seeing the purple lights on the trees. But we have decorated the trees around City Hall with purple lights in recognition for this. And this is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas on average nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, during one year, this equates to more than 10 million women and men. One in three women and one in four men have been victims of some form of physical violence. One in three women and one in four men have been victims of some form of physical violence by an intimate partner within their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and has a devastating impact on survivors, children, families, and our communities, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and social barriers and is sustained by indifference, and whereas in 2017, the Kenmore Police Department responded to 107 domestic violence calls that resulted in 84 arrests, and whereas ending this cycle of this vicious crime requires the courage of survivors and the support of the larger community, and whereas our efforts must extend beyond the criminal justice system to include housing and economic advocacy for survivors, working with young people to stop violence before it starts, and reaching out to friends and loved ones who have suffered from domestic violence. Now, I therefore, David Baker, do proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Kenmore. And let us honor survivors by promoting peace in our own families, homes, and communities. And let us renew our commitment to end domestic violence and its brutal and destructive effects so that domestic violence has no future in Kenmore and beyond. And Ms. Hyatt, I think you're here. And if you would like to come forward and accept this proclamation, and I believe you have somebody with you.
I do. Thank you.
And Your Honor, as you know, we're also encouraging people to put purple lights on their front porches, and we have purple lights here at the front desk for people to pick up during city business hours.
Yes, it, it, we have the porch lights available, the bulbs, and if we're trying to get the public to change their, the light bulb in their porch light for one month. And it'll bring awareness to our neighborhoods, and so it's something we've done for a few years now, and I'm glad that we're continuing it. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask you please limit your comments to three minutes, and there is a timer that'll appear on the screen behind me to help remind you. And so, clerk, please call the first person.
Gareth Jeffers.
Ms. Jeffers is the Director of our Senior Center and an active member of the community.
And I just, I know it's budget time, and all I'm doing is just thanking the council and everyone for your continued support of the Kenmore Senior Center. We are growing, our numbers are increasing, more and more people are coming in and saying, "Oh, this is so nice. It's so homey. We like it here." And we're getting new members, and we're getting new people that come in for our programs. We are a part of North Shore and Mill Creek, and we are in total the second-largest senior center in the country. The other, the largest one is also called North Shore, and we get each other's mail occasionally, but they are located in Chicago. And so we are North Shore as one word, and they are North Shore as two words, but it does get a little confusing. But anyhow, so we are the, we have the second-largest senior center in the country, and we are growing. And I just want to thank you so much for your wonderful support for the Senior Center. And, you know, everybody loves us, what can I say? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffers.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Oh, we, we do have one more person here.
I signed something, but maybe it was on piece of paper. I hope I didn't sign up to sweep the floor.
Before, as you're making your way up there, if it's for the, the public hearing on the mobile home moratorium, then that will be just a little later in the agenda.
That's another one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Anybody else wishing to speak about the comment? Thank you all very much, and thank you, Ms. Jeffers, for being here tonight, and thank you for speaking. We do value our Senior Center. All right, next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing and deliberation on Ordinance Number 18-0470, extending the moratorium prohibiting the filing and acceptance of applications for development permits relating to mobile home parks. Should we do the public comment first and then have the discussion and deliberation, or do you want to do discussion and deliberation first?
I thought I might give a brief introduction, and then the public hearing could be held, and then I will remain here for questions.
Wonderful. Let's do that.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor Baker and Councilmembers. Tonight's public hearing is on the proposed ordinance that would extend the Mobile Home Park Moratorium for an additional six months. This moratorium prevents redevelopment of the Mobile Home Park properties while the city is considering approaches. The current moratorium has been in place since November 2017. There was one extension last spring, and it, the moratorium would expire on October 28th this month if there were no action taken. The proposal is to extend the moratorium until April 8th of 2019. So as you know, there's been a very active public process throughout the time of this moratorium. The Planning Commission considered the issue at multiple meetings, starting in October 2017 and culminating when they made their recommendation to you in July. You've held several meetings, and most recently on September 17th, gave us direction. So we are moving forward, expecting conference of plan amendments by the end of the year, and then zoning proposals at the beginning of 2019. So we're hoping that you will continue the moratorium to give us time, all of us time to finish the work. And state law requires that we hold a public hearing if there's going to be an extension, so we recommend that you hold the public hearing and then consider adopting the ordinance.
So, I declare the public hearing and deliberation on Ordinance Number 18-0470, extending the moratorium prohibiting the filing and acceptance of applications for development permits relating to mobile home parks to be open. The clerk, please call the first person.
Be right with you, Mayor, okay. John Crumwhite.
I'm John Crumwhite. I live in Inglewood East Mobile Home Park, right on the Siamish River here, along with about 100 other seniors that occupy the 79 lots there. I want to thank the members of the council that came by the park and came into our homes and, and shared some time with us, and took the time to see the quality of life that we have there for seniors. It's, it was nice to spend time with you guys, and thank you, thanks for your time. I've been living at Inglewood East since 2011, and I moved in, the park was advertised as affordable living, and it provides a, a much better alternative than, than an apartment, so all you have to do is be willing to buy a home and, and maintain it. And I remodeled my place, and put, you know, everything I had into it. We provide housing for, as I said, about 100 seniors, mostly on fixed incomes. It's provided housing for hundreds of seniors for almost 40 years. We've gone through, I think, three owners now, and before buying, I asked about lot rents, and was told they go up about $10 or $20 a month each year, as they had for the last 30-some years. Lot rent for me in 2012 was about $450 plus utilities. I, like a lot of my neighbors, live on fixed, very low incomes. A lot of us are disabled, a lot of us just have Social Security. We bought our homes with help from our families and friends, and, and a lot of us put everything we have into our houses. Well, we were very concerned when we learned our park had been sold to our new owners, the Millard Brothers, and that, that evolved into fear when we found their internet site promising big returns for investors that wanted to invest in mobile home parks with them. They stated in their, on the internet that they were expert at finding new streams of revenue. We assumed those new streams of revenue would be coming from us, and we were right. We had an oral agreement, we bought our homes, that rents would go up 10, maybe $20 a month in some years, but our rents have been going up about $50 to $100 a month each year. It's painful to see good neighbors forced to sell their homes as they become unaffordable. The stress on some of my elderly neighbors has taken a toll. Bud and Mae Sessler, we, we watched their health deteriorate when they were faced with the option of moving out as they couldn't afford the constantly increasing rents. Bud died in the home, and Mae died six months later. Bud and Mae Sessler were two of the most vital, healthy seniors I'd ever met in my life when I moved into the park. They had a place on the river, and they bicycled like five, 10, 15 miles on their bicycles. Bud was a competitive senior of bike racer, and Mae was still doing massage therapy when I moved in. It was really painful to watch them die and their house be demolished and make room for another house. While our rents have doubled, our infrastructure is allowed to deteriorate, the water lines are not up to code, they're described by plumbers as antique, there's leaks that go unfixed for weeks, recurring leaks. We've had two, three leaks in the same spot, and we've got a current leak in the, on the road that the big trucks caused the lines to break under the road. So we live with dirt in our water. Our driveways have dangerous holes in them that go, we're now told that the driveways are our responsibility, and if we want to maintain, that's our, our responsibility to pay to maintain the driveways and the sidewalks. That's in the lease that we were forced to sign, or pay more money if we didn't sign. We've lost the amenities we had. The parking that we had was taken up by three new houses were put into our parking lot by the cabana. The boat launch was locked up for a time, and we were charged $50 to buy a key or pay for a key to open it. It's painful to witness our landlords be praised for providing affordable housing for seniors. Quite the opposite. It seems that their main concern is their profits. And their profits have resulted in people being priced out of their homes. And, and we've got one gal living with a flashlight for lighting because she can't afford her electric bill.
Mr. Crumwhite, we're at our, your time limit.
Okay. I want to thank you again for taking the time to, to look into this, and thank you for the moratorium, and thank you for all you've done. We need your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Crumwhite.
Joanna Crocker.
And first, I want to thank each of you.
Can you state your name?
Oh, excuse me. Joanna Crocker, and I reside at 7301 Northeast 175 Street in Kenmore in Inglewood East. And I do thank each and every one of you people sitting in front of me tonight for all the listening. Some of this stuff has been really hard around the manufactured homes, and all the listening has been so polite, and in some cases, very kind. So today for me was really tough, and this is why. How many more times must I listen to and too often end up crying with people who are absolutely terrified that they will lose their home, their independence, their community of friends for many years, their church, their pets, and be moved far away from the medical providers who have attended them for many years? And I got two of these calls today, and a couple of people just walking into my home where I work, and people are scared. And all of these recent pleas for help were triggered by rents in our park. What can a nearly blind person aged 79 do when their rent exceeds their Social Security? Or their grandchildren want to remove them to a nursing home 2,000 miles away from everything they've ever known? Now, I and the leaders of our homeowners association in Inglewood get it that the city council cannot fix these problems, which are directly related to the lack of regulation around rents in our state of Washington. We are told that it would take a constitutional amendment to the state constitution to address this situation. And as it now stands, the landlords who own the dirt under our manufactured homes were the ones who drafted the current laws. And at this point, I just have to say, I was raised a real Vermont farmer, and this sure looks like a case of the foxes writing the rules for the chicken coop. And I recently talked to my sister, who's still a real Vermont farmer. A fox stole a chicken from her coop, and she exploded in fury, chased the fox, and actually managed to save the chicken. This is really true. I don't know how badly the fox was damaged, the chicken made it, but this is not a good or safe way to do things with animals or humans. So I've let people on our different teams know, and the people at Association for Manufactured Homeowners know that I'm willing to go down to Olympia again in the next session and to testify, to think, to do whatever is needed for this. So what I'm asking of the council tonight is to please continue to keep the door open as you have already done, to continue to talk, and for us all to act as neighbors together. And most of all, I want to thank the council for the incredible amount of listening you have done with all of us. And if anyone has a new bright idea for how to keep hundreds of seniors off the streets, I'm pretty sure that I and all my friends from the park are all ears, and tonight, what the council can do is pass the moratorium, keep that moratorium going, please. And thanks again for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to speak at this public hearing? Anybody else wishing to speak at the public hearing dealing with Ordinance Number 18-0470, extending the moratorium and prohibiting the filing and acceptance of applications for development permits relating to mobile home parks? Seeing nobody else coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. And so, thank you for the, the introduction you gave. Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Shrubnik?
It's not exactly, sort of a question. So for the parks on one seventy-fifth, I remember we chose option one, and that would, which is long-term preservation. And with an eye potentially toward option two, which was homeowners' association, either alone or in combination with something like Arch, might be able to purchase and control better what happens in their park. And my understanding, and I just want confirmation of this, is by choosing option one, we make the option two more likely. It wouldn't happen without having chosen option one. Is that a fair restatement?
I don't know that it would make it more or less likely. I think, actually, both of the property owners of those two mobile home parks have stated that they have a long-term commitment to preservation, whether, I mean, I don't think it makes it more likely or less likely. If the homeowners or another agency or a nonprofit or someone wanted to pursue purchase, that option is available to them. But I don't think that the city's potential action would influence that. It's not enough of a, I don't think it's enough of a change in the zoning and density that it would make it more or less likely.
All right. So any further questions, comments on the moratorium in front of us? Hearing none, and I would ask for a motion to extend the moratorium. And you want the ordinance eighteen dash zero four seven zero extended?
Are you looking to me for the title?
No, I'm not looking at you for the title.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. Yeah, I would move that, I'd like to move ordinance eighteen dash zero four seven zero to extend the current moratorium prohibiting the filing and acceptance of applications for development permits related to mobile home parks through April eight, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed.
Unanimously. Yeah, I was looking for the end date, and I wasn't on the, I wasn't on the right page. That's what I was looking at you for. All right. Next item on the agenda is City of Kenmore Proposed Two Thousand and Nineteen Federal Legislative Priorities and Report from Paul Schlesinger from McCall Day and Fay.
Good evening, mayor and council. We are pleased tonight to be joined by our intergovernmental relations representatives at both the federal and state level to discuss the proposed legislative agendas for the federal and state level. You'll notice that in both agenda bills, there is a list of suggested priorities for the upcoming session, and then a list of kind of policy statements that, as these issues may come up in the proceedings of either the Congress or state legislature, that the government representatives, intergovernmental representatives, have the guidance to express support or follow those. So first, I'm really pleased to have Paul Schlesinger with us this evening with McCall Day and Fay. The last time that Paul was here was two years ago, when we discussed the federal agenda at that time. We are continuing to follow, as proposed in this document, Lake Point project infrastructure, the possibilities for funding, maintenance dredging or the precursors to maintenance dredging for the Kenmore Navigation Channel. And my apologies, because the first sentence of, under that heading, should belong at the end of that section, not at the, not at the beginning. It refers to some sediment testing that is about to get underway. Kenmore era temporary flight restrictions and Ballard locks, which Mayor Baker has certainly been very supportive of investments in that really pivotal project. I want Paul, because he doesn't get to speak with you here all at once very often, to be able to say a few words about what to expect in this next year at Congress and some of the priorities that are outlined in the proposed agenda.
Thanks, Nancy. Mayor, deputy mayor, council members, manager, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I was motivated to talk about the proposed agenda for next year and talk about a couple of the highlights, in other words, what we did right and we got for you in this past year. I would say, although I came here and appeared two years ago, I was also in the city last year, I suppose it must have been, it was about this time of year, it must not have been during the council night, or days here last year. And recall, we went to the Army Corps, just for headquarters. I think it might be useful to start with a brief discussion of the very big picture about appropriations bills that are now passing, that you've probably read about in the past few weeks. Several of the appropriations bills this year did pass Congress and were signed into law prior to the start of the new fiscal year, which began on October the first. I think it's the first time in seven or eight years that separate appropriations bills were actually enacted prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, which, of course, is...
So a number of the appropriations bills have been enacted, including the appropriations bills for the Army Corps of Engineers. And when Congress comes back after the elections for a lame duck session, of course, the remainder of the bills will be enacted. And in the meantime, we're working under a continuing resolution. So the appropriations bills that are passing are for FY nineteen, the fiscal year that starts, that started on October first and will run through September thirtieth of nineteen. These bills are being passed under the two, big two-year budget agreement that Senator Murray was actually one very instrumental in being a part of, along with Speaker Ryan two years ago, that is actually allowing an increase in defense and domestic spending. And it's under this big two-year agreement that, absent that, there would probably be very severe cuts in budget spending and for the types of programs that municipalities around the country are very interested in, as well as defense spending. And, you know, I think that the fact that some folks in Congress are more interested in defense spending that would otherwise be cut, others in domestic spending, is what allowed people to come together and pass this, the budget deal that's allowing money to go up. The concern is that next year, if a similar budget deal isn't worked out, there is the real threat that you're going to see the kinds of budget cuts that people were concerned about a couple of years ago and that were avoided. The president's budget for FY twenty, his budget proposal, by custom and tradition, are submitted to Congress in the first Monday of February. And so that would be the administration's budget proposal for FY twenty. And it's that document on which Congress works its will throughout next year. And it's that budget that we want to make sure doesn't, although the president's budget will include many cuts, as they have the last two years, Congress, you know, a united Congress worked to make sure that those cuts were avoided. I think the question is, how would a change in the majority of the House or Senate affect the process of getting a budget deal ironed out? Or would there be sort of an increased gridlock if one or both chambers switches parties? Also, under the big picture that the party switched, is an Oregon congressman, Peter DeFazio, who is the ranking Democrat on the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee that has jurisdiction over highways transit, Army Corps of Engineers, happened to have been in our office a week ago Friday. And he's the fellow who, if the Democrats do take back the House, would presumably become the chairman of the Transportation Committee. And he indicated, which is of interest, I think, to communities around the country, that he would work hard to bring back earmarks, at least for those departments. Whether or not that would happen, of course, remains to be seen, remains to be seen if the Democrats were to get the majority back. But the thing that's, of course, significant to Kenmore is that that could restore the opportunity to get small amounts of money for transportation projects that are priorities or other EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers. That kind of brings us, I think, to the FY nineteen legislative proposal that's been proposed, and Nancy went over some of the highlights on the Lake Point project. I know when the mayor was in Washington, perhaps with one or two of you earlier, and over the last year or two, there were visits to the Economic Development Administration, which is a part of the Department of Commerce. They make grants, planning grants, but also construction grants directly to municipalities for projects that help attract the private sector into communities and generate, get projects built. Also important for Lake Point are brownfield considerations under the jurisdiction of the Environmental Protection Agency, and visits were made there. I think it's going to be important to continue those kinds of communications and visits as Lake Point, as I understand, it progresses. And again, if there were earmarks restored and restored for those programs, that provides an opportunity to get money directly through Congress. With regard to the Kenmore Channel, which is an Army Corps project, one of the real accomplishments over the past year, although money had been appropriated by, secured a couple of years ago, I think it was four hundred and forty thousand dollars to do a sediment analysis there, and that sediment analysis showed that there were the types of toxins that are in almost any urban project that the Corps would undertake. And that temporarily slowed down the project, certainly because of the increased cost that would accrue most likely to the city if the project were to move forward. An environmental consultant, actually, that the city employs was aware of a new sort of assessment that was done up at Port Everett, and that was really tried for the first time in this, in this division of the Corps. And the Corps was agreeable to using that sort of assessment here at the Kenmore Channel, which sort of gives us a redo and to see if a new sediment analysis might not have better results using this kind of assessment. And the Army Corps work plan, and I'll just take thirty seconds to describe what that is. When earmarks were first, Congress elected to discontinue earmarks about eight years ago, the very first year under that, they, in the Army Corps appropriations bill, they said that they provided additional amounts of money for the main Army Corps programs, and they gave the Corps, they instructed the Corps to come back and report to Congress how that additional money was going to be spent. And that gives members the opportunity to go in and try to work with the Corps to get their projects included in the work plan. And indeed, in this past year, I think it was six hundred thousand dollars was included in the FY eighteen work plan to do the sediment analysis. That's ongoing right now. I think there's going to be a telephone conference tomorrow where the mayor and city staff are going to be discussing the progress of that analysis with the Corps. And if the sediment analysis, I'm sorry?
Can I jump in? Well, I just want to talk about earmarks when you think the time is right. So finish your thought.
Okay, and then, sure. You know, in the event that the sediment analysis, which is going to be performed over the next few months, is positive, that would then give us the opportunity, hopefully, to get money to do the next stage and conduct the dredging, perhaps in an FY twenty work plan. Nancy mentioned the temporary flight restrictions, I think, at Kenmore Air, a couple of, for years, during any time that the president visited Seattle, which was, I guess, fairly frequent during the Obama administration, Kenmore Air had to shut down its operations during the time that the president was here. Obviously, a pretty significant employer for the city and significant means of transportation for folks wanting to come into the city or exit. Working with the Secret Service was something that we'd never done before, and it was not an easy process to access them even. But interestingly, towards the end of the administration, on a single presidential trip, they agreed to allow Kenmore Air to continue its operations while the president was here. And I think what we're going to try to do is to convince the Secret Service to make that a permanent procedure. Finally, with regard to Ballard locks, in last year's budget and as part of the Army Corps work plan, the city was actually part of, and in some regards, led a coalition of communities. Matter of fact, I know every city, including the city of Seattle, signed a letter to the Corps that I think Mayor Baker was the lead author on. And indeed, the Corps was persuaded to add thirteen point one million dollars to help upgrade the existing Ballard locks, a hundred years old, incredibly significant to the economy of the county and flood control throughout the county transportation. Also of interest, I think, the fact that we not only got that thirteen one, thirteen point one million, but the amount of money that wasn't included in the president's budget for fiscal year nineteen was much less than it had been for eighteen. In nineteen, there's a shortfall of only about five million dollars that the Corps said they could do if they had the money. So what we're in the middle of working on right now is trying to get that five million dollars to continue the modernization of the locks. With that, any questions?
Yeah, do you mind if I add?
I know whenever I talk about earmarks, and I've gone to a couple of different clients on the West Coast this week, and the mention of earmarks usually gets the attention of city managers.
It does, because, because I've seen earmarks in action and actually put them to good use in my career, and earmarks get a bad rap, mainly because you get a couple of bad ones, and then they ruin it for everybody else. But in fact, earmarks actually are a small fraction of the overall budget. And when you, when Congress bans earmarks, they're effectively shifting power from the legislative branch to the executive branch. And in particular, the bureaucrats back in DC are getting power shifted to them. And I don't know that the folks back in DC know what's best out here on the ground. And you have your local, locally-elected Congresswoman, Susan Delbene, and our senators, who do come here and do visit with us and learn from us what we need to make our communities work. So I know I'm getting a little political here, but, and that's really not my job. So I know I'm getting a little political here, but, and that's really not my job, but I, I do think it's a shift in power when Congress bans earmarks. And like I said, I've seen appropriations, I like the word appropriations better than earmarks, but I've seen appropriations put to good use to build local infrastructure. So my hope is that they come back. I realize we have a federal deficit we need to be aware of too, but earmarks have a way of also helping things get done in Congress, not just the earmarks themselves, but they also help pass important legislation that can actually move this country forward.
And earmarks don't necessarily increase spending, overall spending at all. They just, as you said, allow the members of Congress to dictate how some of the money gets, a very small percentage, as you also said, of the money gets spent rather than going through the hands of the bureaucrats in Washington.
Yeah, and at the state level, we still have earmarks, and we still put them to, put the money to good use, so.
Yeah, I think back in 2009, we did get an earmark. I know I got a phone call from Senator Murray, and it was for the 522 project. She called me and congratulated the city for a million dollars or a little over a million. And then the economy tanked, and so, but it was in the road to helping us complete the 522 project back then. So they certainly can be beneficial. Any other questions, comments? Councilman Smith?
Yes, thanks for coming this evening. And I had a question, and it has to do with the earmarks. So without, if earmarks are not restored, what is the probability that the Lake Point, that there is some type of federal funding mechanism that can be tapped into?
Well, certainly, there is a brownfields program that would work the way that the brownfields program is authorized to work, which is a really lengthy process, by the way. There's a huge, there's a substantial backlog of brownfields projects around the country. And, you know, at this point, we would be getting into the queue as we were ready to do that. The program at the Economic Development Administration, again, there's procedures and that need to be done. We found that the EDA program is a little bit easier to access. A lot of their money is planning money. It's not the money that would be, you know, doing public improvements necessarily at Lake Point. Although ultimately, there is some money for public improvements at economic development sites.
So with that, can you tell me what you or your firm would specifically do to help push that from the Lake Point side?
Well, I mean, I think that working to secure an earmark is just the same as working to secure any other piece of public policy or objective. We would probably, we would work with you to understand in detail what the needs are. We want to help you understand which of your objectives might be most successful and most appealing to the folks in Congress. And that's not just our delegation that's probably going to want to do whatever it is that we ask them to do, but the chairman, the ranking members at the committees that are making those decisions. There's some proposals that might be easier to get done, some that would be tougher to get done. We'd help you make that assessment. If you were to say, well, the ones that are the toughest things to get done are the most important, and that's what you want to pursue anyway, obviously, that's fine, and we're going to help you with that as long as you have the understanding that the likelihood of success might be a little bit less. You know, there's always sort of the issue of trying to force a square peg through a round hole, and we want to work through that with you. After the decisions are made of what you would be wanting to pursue, we work with you at fleshing out the best ways of presenting what it is that you want, getting it to our delegation, because ultimately, you know, it's our delegation that needs to really be pushing for our earmarks. Certainly, Senator Murray is on the Appropriations Committee, and to the extent that some of the earmarks are through the appropriations process. And it's unclear right now how it would move forward, if it moves forward at all. Congressman DeFazio was talking about the committee that he would be chairing, which is the Authorizing Committee for Transportation and Infrastructure. In the past, although they did lots of earmarks, it was also the appropriations committees that did, you know, considerable earmarking, and presumably would again if the doors were open. So Senator Murray would certainly be key as a senior member on that committee. So, you know, we help you package what your proposals are to get to the, to get to our senators and Congresswoman, and then work with the committees of jurisdiction to go in, help persuade them, work with staff, have them understand what the needs are and how our proposals help address their objectives.
Thank you. And I do have another question later.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And it's on the dredging, then. Can you tell me, since we went through this a few years ago and we had the analysis done, if the, do we know if the, if the new standard that was used at the Port of Everett is applied to the dredging sediment that was done here a few years ago, does that meet the open water disposal requirements then?
It's not a new standard. The requirements are the same. It's a way of measuring the level of toxicity.
Okay.
Is what's different in this different kind of test.
So there's no way, and I don't know enough about the science and how this works, but there's no way to take some of the samples that were done a few years ago and apply the new standard or testing to them?
I would suspect, I would suspect that those samples don't exist anymore.
Right. So they just throw them out after the? And this is a truly layperson's depiction of my understanding of what's called the bioassay method of measuring the level of contamination. It's, there are organisms that are introduced in, with the samples. And if those organisms survive, then it's deemed, you know, less toxic. And it's, as Paul mentioned and the mayor mentioned, Port of Everett was one of the first to use this and this method in our area. And because of the conditions there, very urbanized and with some history of industrial uses in that area, we were watching this pretty closely and along with our consultant. And so, the dredge material management program at the Corps, which is an interagency group, they approved Everett's project for open water. That's, that's a different project.
Right.
This would be ours, but, but it's promising.
Okay, great. And then just to kind of follow up as a last part of that, if, so assuming it comes back, and let's say it is viable for open water disposal, then do we have to, do we run the risk of it expiring again in a couple of years if we don't secure the Army Corps funding for the actual dredging itself?
I don't know if the interval is the same as the other, but I'm sure there is some sort of shelf life.
Does that give us a priority if we, if we have that, if we have that favorable resort, result? Does that help us at all? Do you know in the federal side?
I think once you start down the process, it's easier to continue down the process. The Corps doesn't like to just shut down a project. You know, our, the difficulty with our project is always going to be that we're competing for maintenance dredging dollars with the Port of LA and the Port of Oakland, and our project just isn't, small, small projects just don't do as well and have the same priority as larger projects.
And that's exactly why I asked, for that exact reason.
Although Senator Cantwell let us, let us know that there are funds set aside for small harbors, just knowing that a smaller harbor isn't going to compete with the Port of Savannah, Georgia, or some of the bigger projects around the country. But there is money set aside for those smaller projects.
Okay, great. No, thank you. I appreciate it. And it's just, it's a lot of work and a lot of effort, and having, you know, had a failed result last time, it would be a bummer to get all the way through this and not see it through again a second time.
I don't know that it was necessarily a failed result. That was sort of a cursory sample, and I know what we're doing now is a much more detailed sampling, because we did the $400 and some dollar sampling program, and it was done by the dredge materials.
Right.
But I think this one is a little more detailed.
This?
And more, more deeper Corps samples.
We're kind of going back in time here, but we did do a screening level.
Right.
One initially.
Right.
And then that, that helped get money for that Corps-funded.
Exactly.
And that, that was not a cursory test. Those were, those were very detailed samples.
What I'm saying is that one was 400. This one is over 600,000, so it's a little bit more involved, I think.
And a few years have gone by, too.
And a few years have gone by, yes. But I think that the fact that we got the money to do the $600,000, and the Corps has indicated they wanted to keep the project alive by funding that part, I think it sort of casts a favorable light. It's going to take effort to get the money to do the actual dredge, but I think this has been a fairly good indicator that they're still somewhat interested. And if we take a look at this project, I think with the efforts of us going back there and with, according to Fay and Paul here, you look at from 14 to 18, you know, we've picked up over a million dollars.
You know, I know I was very pleased that in the first year that we were trying to do it, we did secure the $600,000. I think that's a tribute, not just to the council's efforts, but also a pretty determined congressional delegation that really wants to help us and presume, you know, if the new assessment shows what we hope it shows, I think that determination on their part's still going to be there, and they're going to be working hard with us to get the next slug of money.
I think it's important that we're consistent, we're there, and we continue to deliver the same message, so that all pays off.
And that contact at headquarters coupled with contact here at the district is helpful.
And even division.
Even division in Portland. We've been there together, too.
Yep.
Hey, Adwa.
Sure.
I know I've mentioned it in years past, but I would like to, I think it would be nice if we do, if it does come back favorable, that we can involve the marine and water-based businesses in the process, one, so they can take some ownership in future endeavors down this dredging path, but also to potentially share some financial responsibility on it.
Right. Well, certainly, if they, if the marina and that wants done, and further into the channel wants done, they're going to have to take some financial responsibility because that will not be part of it. So.
Right.
Anything else? So, we are looking to approve the proposed 2019 City of Kenmore federal legislative priorities. And we can do this, I guess, with a voice vote. So all of those who are in favor of approving our federal priorities, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Looks like we are unanimous on approving the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlesinger. Next item on our agenda is the City of Kenmore proposed 2019 state legislative agenda with a report from Brianna Murray and Shelley Helder. And these guys have worked really hard for our city over the past few years. They've been instrumental in helping us complete a lot of projects.
Absolutely. We're very pleased to continue our work with Gordon Thomas Huddington at the state level. And I will turn it over to Brianna and Shelley.
Great. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, even though you've kept me up past my bedtime. I want to start by, really starting tonight's conversation and building on our 2018 successes. So as a reminder, we worked with our legislative delegation in securing funding for the boathouse, Moreland's Park, and $500,000 to begin studying the under and overpass on 522. So we want to take those successes and build on them to, once again, have a successful legislative session in 2019. Our presentation to you this evening is divided into two sections. The first is to provide you with an overview of the political context and what we're expecting in 2019, and the second is to review a draft legislative agenda for your approval. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley to start on the first part of that presentation. Great?
Thank you. So as Brianna said, I'm going to cover the political context of what we're expecting in 2019. And really, the reason we're starting here is because, as you all consider the priorities that you would adopt in the city's legislative agenda and policy statements, we want to make sure that you have an awareness of what we're expecting to happen as a big picture down in Olympia, and some of the issues that we're anticipating will come up during session. So to start kind of at the beginning, in August, obviously, we had the primaries, and the outcome of those primaries gave us a lot of confidence that in 2019, we will still have majority Democrat House and Senate. Kind of what we have been able to safely conclude as a result of the August primary is that those majorities will hold, we just don't know how great the majority will be. So historically, there have been very narrow majorities, which has required a lot of bipartisan legislation. And so depending on the November elections, we'll see how great that majority is. If the primary results hold in the House, there's the potential that Democrats could have a supermajority, which is 2/3 of the seats. In addition to the entire House and half the Senate being on the November ballot, you'll also see four initiatives. Initially, there was only three. The fourth is the Use of Dudley Force Initiative, which was considered as an initiative to the legislature, and then the courts determined that the legislature's actions were unconstitutional, and so it is now going to be on the ballot. No matter the outcome of the initiatives on the ballot, we do anticipate that all four of these topics will be up for discussion in Olympia, whether it's preemption on local taxing authority, gun control, use of Dudley Force, carbon tax. We do anticipate many conversations and legislative proposals on these topics.
It takes a 2/3 majority to amend an initiative that is passed by the people, so the majorities in the House and Senate then become very relevant to what is able to be amended within those initiatives.
And that's 2/3 majority within the first two years of them passing by the people. After the first, after the first two years, you can amend it with a simple majority. So 2019 is the first year of the state's two-year fiscal biennium. This is scheduled to last 105 days, and really, the primary objective for the legislature is to adopt their budgets, the operating budget, transportation budget, and the capital budget. To provide a little bit of context for each of those, the operating budget has many demands on it. That's historically been where the state has been focused their attention on fully funding basic education. Now that that has been addressed, the state's now focused on amply funding the mental health care system, as well as several other issues that have kind of been put on the back burner while the state's been focusing on its primary obligation. The capital budget is a function of the operating budget, and because of the way that the state now funds basic education, the capital budget is now going to be the largest budget in 2019. is now going to be the largest budget in state history, or at least that has the capacity to be the largest budget in state history. So really, we're looking at the capital budget as the primary opportunity for you all to secure funding in this upcoming session. I will say that with that large budget, the majority of that budget will be dedicated towards K through twelve construction. But there is still opportunity for, for local jurisdictions to secure, as it was referred to earmarks. In Olympia, it's more commonly referred to as direct appropriations. And then lastly, the transportation budget, there's currently a two million dollar shortfall with no change to anticipated-
Two hundred million? What did I say?
Two. Oh, sorry, two hundred million, thank you.
Big difference.
Yeah, yeah. Two hundred million dollar shortfall with no change to that projection. There will be some projects that are anticipated to begin in the nineteen twenty-one biennium that will not be able to. We, we think that that shortfall will kind of work its way out through some projects that may be ready to go online and some that won't be. But really, the transportation budget is going to be the tightest budget. We're looking at opportunities. Brianna, I'll talk to this a little bit later, but especially in consideration of the carbon tax that's on the ballot in November, depending on how that pans out, there may or may not be the political appetite for a mini package to address some of the state's largest transportation projects that were not previously funded in connecting Washington. In addition to the budgets that the state legislature will be working on, they'll also be considering thousands of policy bills. Hundreds of them will have the potential to impact city business, and so we'll be monitoring those on your behalf. The Association of Washington Cities just recently finished up its process of identifying its legislative priorities for 2019. So we wanted to make you aware of what those priorities were. We know that some of them have been items you all have tracked and advocated for in the past. One of the ones that I'll just highlight is the supportive economic development tool to encourage job creation and economic growth. This is a, what they're really getting at there is a tool similar to the local infrastructure financing tool, or the local revitalization financing program, LIFT or LRF. And really what those are, they're, they're value capture tools for local jurisdictions to use towards infrastructure to spur economic growth. And then it's, again, Brianna, I'll talk about, talk about this a little bit earlier, but that's something that is really in line with what we think you all could potentially utilize at Lake Point. And with that, I will turn it over to Brianna.
Wonderful. Okay, so before I dive into your draft legislative priorities, I wanted to remind you of some guidance that we provide you each year. The first is that we encourage you to adopt a biennial legislative agenda that aligns with the biennial cycle. And that way, you're presenting your priorities to the legislature in a format that they're familiar with, and in a format that funding opportunities are available on. We encourage you to keep your agenda concise and easily comprehensible. In an effort to do that while balancing the hundreds of different bills that get introduced that impact the city, we do work with you to develop a legislative agenda and a policy document. And the purpose of each of those documents is for the legislative agenda to be really where we keep our legislators focused, that they're able to rattle off the top of, or that the, off the tip of their tongue, the three to five priorities that are of utmost importance to the city council, that you're going to measure whether or not the legislative session was successful by. And then the policy document is a much longer list of issues that really are providing guidance to us, as well as city staff, on the different bills to weigh in on, different bills you want us to testify on or sign in on. So we've got drafts of both of those documents before you today. And the other item that we provide guidance on is to keep some consistency. So as I mentioned before, to build on some of the successes we've had on the past. And I think what you'll see in the drafts before you is there's a fair amount of consistency from our previous agendas to this year. And we're building on a lot of the other work, the work we've done in previous years to lay the groundwork for success this year. So with that guidance in mind, I'm going to go through the legislative agenda items. And while I have them on a slide up here, I want to direct you to the actual documents that I believe you all have access to in your packets. That, I don't know what you refer to your packets when they're no longer made of paper. And Nancy, do you want me to just dive in on these?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. So the first item is to propel the Lake Point development. This item was on your previous legislative agenda. And as I mentioned, it's building on our previous efforts. What we've done to date is we've informed your legislative delegation, as well as some of the key chairs, of the Lake Point site and the potential for its development. We have not advanced a specific legislative proposal or funding request around the site because it's not yet been ready for primetime. We think this session is the year that it is ready for primetime to really begin putting those types of proposals before the legislature. I do think that addressing the overall Lake Point site development and the challenges that it faces will require a multifaceted or multi-funding approach, but that there is certain proposals we can bring forward that will make large, dense in solving the problem. So in the draft before you, there's some updated language that is more specific, that speaks, it's in the second paragraph. We've updated a number of the language just to be consistent with recent proposals. But in the second paragraph, it say, it says, "The City of Kenmore requests that the state provide a construction sales tax credit for public improvements on the site or other economic development incentives necessary to allow this property to overcome this hurdle and be developed." That is really speaking to a bill that we would work with the legislative delegation to have introduced, that would be specific to the needs around the Lake Point site, and providing funding oriented around that site. We've built in this language around other economic development incentives because we're aware that the Association of Washington Cities is bringing forward an economic development proposal. And we recognize that as the legislature considers their broad economic development proposal with the city's narrower economic development proposal focused on Lake Point, there may be opportunity, or synergy, or possibility of merging the two, or taking care of both sites within one bill. So we wanted to leave the door open for that type of conversation with our legislators, as well as with the association.
And if I could jump in on this, so, a, a sales tax credit that would go to help pay for infrastructure, so that's not unheard of. I've seen it elsewhere, especially in Gig Harbor. The City of Gig Harbor was able to pass similar legislation in, in a portion of their city. And so if you, if this, if the state's sales tax share is about six percent, and if the project is north of one billion dollars, so six percent of a billion dollars is sixty million dollars, you know, the gap is around a hundred and fifty million. So sixty million dollar sales tax credit could go a long way to helping fill that gap. Of course, it wouldn't come in all at once, it would come in over years because the project would take years to build. But that's kind of the order of magnitude that we're looking at. Brianna, Shelley, do you want to comment on that?
It's a big number, and it's likely to drive a large fiscal note associated with the bill, which is going to be challenging for us to overcome. One of the challenges in advancing these types of bills is that the state legislature, when they're doing fiscal analysis on bills, they don't provide a return on investment analysis. They simply say, here's how much it's going to cost the state. It is going to be on us in partnership with all of you, as well as with the, the Lake Point developer, to communicate to the legislature that that level of, of investment from the state is a good investment, and that the state is going to see a return on that investment. It will not be inherent in their fiscal analysis, it's going to be on us to convey that to the appropriate legislators.
Yep. And Brianna's right, they, they don't think like a business, so they don't do an ROI analysis. But of all the jurisdictions, the state will be the biggest winner by far if Lake Point gets developed. And we need to make that ROI case, and we also need to demonstrate to them and remind them that that's revenue that they're not getting now, and it's likely revenue that they won't ever get unless Lake Point happens. So it's, it's interesting how they don't do those return on investment analysis, they just, it just automatically shows up in the cost column to them, which I find perplexing.
And in an effort to begin this conversation with the legislature, we did have an opportunity in coordination with the Association of Washington Cities to get the city some time on the House Local Government Committee agenda on October twenty-second. So we've got the city manager lined up to be presenting at that committee meeting and to start highlighting the Lake Point site for legislators in that very public setting.
And, and Gig Harbor's sales tax credit was also on the order of sixty million dollars. So again, not unheard of, it's been done before.
Over a decade ago, but yes.
Yes. And we've had, and we had an amazing intergovernmental firm pull it off back then. Oh, that was Gordon Thomas Honeywell, wasn't it? Oh.
Yes, yes. Shame on me for ever having a big success for such a demanding client. Okay, the next item on your agenda, unless, questions on Lake Point? Yes?
Counselor Curtis.
So in paragraph one, line five, it says, sentence starts, "As a result, deep foundation systems, et cetera." I think the word "as a result" should be removed because there's two issues. One is, the state uses this as a landfill, and that may relate to brownfield sites and a descent decree, but the piling to related geology. It, it's a bunch of muck and mud, and the, the bedrock is a long ways down. So those two are not logically as a result. If you just took out that phrase, I think the rest I could live with.
Okay. Easy enough. Other questions on Lake Point? Okay, moving on to the next item, which is a transportation funding request for Sixty-Eighth Avenue Northeast pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. This is a project that was highlighted in your waterway and walkways proposal, and so I think there's a good community buy-in on the project as a whole. Additionally, because of that, voters approved bond revenue of five point one million to allocate toward the project. So there's really good sort of state-local match to make this a compelling request for the legislature. And finally, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar number really fits in with the current environment around transportation funding, which Shelley was describing earlier. You'll remember, she mentioned that there's a shortfall in the transportation budget, which means that in order to advance any request within that budget, they're going to be looking at projects that are making smaller investments. And then finally, I think we're going to see a legislature that's very friendly to bike and pedestrian improvements, that has a strong willingness to make more investments in bike and pedestrians than other parts of our transportation system. The next item on the legislative agenda is support for the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program. I think you all are familiar with this grant program. The city competes for grant funding, and the RCO board ranks projects. Then the legislature funds the ranked lists, and how much funding the legislature allocates to the program determines which projects receive funding. If the legislature chooses to fund the WWRP grant program at its recommended level, the city would receive two grants. One is one point seven million for Squire's Landing waterfront and natural area access. And the second is six hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars for Log Boom Park waterfront access and viewing. This is a statement for that program overall. The next item on the legislative agenda is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request to make improvements to Twin Springs, Twin Springs Park. We believe this is a highly competitive funding amount, that, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be something that legislators view as being very achievable. And it builds on our previous advocacy. When we were in a position to ask for additional funding requests in previous legislative sessions beyond those that we had identified on the legislative agenda, Twin Springs Park was one of the items that we had identified for our, our delegation, and specifically for Senator Frocht. So this is building on that previous success, previous request, that while not, while it wasn't successful in previous sessions, we know the delegation has an awareness for the need. And the last item is really putting a flag for a long-term legislative priority, and also identifying what, what we're observing as being the next large state funding request in the transportation budget arena for the city. And that is funding for whatever the solution is identified on the underpass or overpass for five twenty-two. If conversations around a mini package or other elements get a lot of traction, this item is on there to flag for our delegation that they can begin to allocate funding for it, but it also recognizes we don't have all of our homework done to be able to give them a specific cost estimate. Those are what are included in your proposed legislative agenda. Are there any questions about those before I move to the policy statements? On the policy statements, I'm not going to go through each and every item. I wanted to flag three items that are additions to the policy statements. And there's been some other rewording and reordering of items if you compare to the previous year. But I wanted to flag three items in particular. And the first is around small cell network facility infrastructure, or small cell net infrastructure. The city was previously engaged in opposing proposals that would have preempted local control around the siting of small cell network facilities, and had a unique story to tell because you all have done the hard work of developing local regulations around the deployment of those facilities. So the city has been able to share its story about how you all have worked with the telecommunications industry on that deployment, and imploring upon the legislature to honor the work you've done and not preempt it. That conversation is evolving, given the FCC ruling that was released at the end of September. I'm actually meeting with a group of the telecommunications lobbyists tomorrow morning at eight AM in Olympia. So thank you for getting me home late at night. We are expecting this issue to come back this year, and it seemed appropriate, given the work you've done locally, that it be included on your policy statements. Another addition is around mobile home legislation. In addition to support legislation, and I think this is really providing guidance to us broadly to pay attention to any legislation around mobile homes, but to support legislation specifically that ensures individuals considering purchasing a mobile home are informed about laws and regulations limiting the transport of mobile homes. But as I mentioned, this was, this is, in my mind, gives us guidance to look at any legislation around mobile homes and to have that conversation with city staff.
Hey, I have a quick comment on that one. If you'd jump in.
I actually think that, I, I think, I appreciate that you're thinking about mobile homes. I don't think that, that policy statement quite goes far enough. It's, it's kind of more of a warning of, hey, you might not be able to move your home. I'd like to support something a little broader, saying maybe something along the lines of the city supports legislation to protect mobile homeowners' investments in their homes, dot, 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 or something along those lines. I, I want, I would like for you guys to feel like you have the green light to sign in on bills like reused bill last year that would extend notification for change of use or selling of a park, rather than just, you know, notification about, you know, people's ability to move their homes that they're buying. I think that's a little too limited. So I think we see a little broader support in that statement.
Okay.
I definitely agree. And I also think, even if it addressed even the verbiage that, you know, right now it's required in the lease, that they have to have a larger font to disclose that the mobile home park can be sold and everything, but it's, it's, I reviewed a lease, and it's, you know, it was like twenty pages, and it's at the very end. And it, I, I think, I think it's very easy to miss the fact that oftentimes, these buyers don't understand that their leases can go up by extraordinary amounts, and also that if they can't afford it, they may have to sell their house to, they may end up having less than market ability to sell their home, and then because of needing approval for land from the property owners there. And I think there's a lot of issues around this that really could have a lot more clarity for the, for the, and the time to hit it is when they're buying the homes, because that's the most important part. important part because they haven't made the investment yet. And so anything that can be done on that, I think is a huge plus to, you know, get disclosures for everything else, but I think it really needs to stand on what's on its own merit as a separate form or something that really outlines the expectations of what a property owner can expect when they buy a home on a rented piece of land.
And I know when I suggested this, I was hoping that we would look at it in a broad sense and be supportive of legislation. I know the one thing that I was concerned about when I brought this was that the sellers weren't required to notify potential purchasers that the mobile home could not be moved. It's like disclosure that is required of homeowners is not required of mobile homeowners, but it has far-reaching implications for some people who are buying an older home and not fully aware of all the ramifications. So I agree with what's being said.
We can integrate some broader language.
Councilmember Marshall.
Could you flesh out more about the indigent defense proposals lobbying?
Absolutely. So in the past, the Washington State Association of Counties has led a coalition that sought to increase funding around indigent defense or public defense. For some jurisdictions, there is a significant increase in the costs of indigent defense funding when the Supreme Court changed its regulations around how many cases a defense attorney can manage. So it somewhat dovetails with that, but is also much larger than that. Washington State allocates very little funding to indigent defense compared to other states. Washington State lets most of that burden lie at the county and city level. Admittedly, the county does carry a larger bill for that service than the city, but the city is also carrying some of that, that cost. So their request is for the state to step up and fully fund indigent defense funding. The Association of Counties has made that request now for one or two legislative sessions, and they've not been successful because it has a significant price tag. I think their hope is to continue to advance that request this upcoming year with the idea that operating budget revenues are healthier than they've been in the past. The McCleary decision has been satisfied in some perspective, and so this could be the year that they choose to increase that funding.
Can I just add to that? If that's okay. So this is a classic example of unfunded mandate where the state increases the standards and the requirements and has no funding to go with it.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I had a question on the last sentence where it talks about standardized and non-competitive to ensure more equitable funding. Standardized, that I understand and makes sense. Somehow, non-competitive seems non-intuitive.
Right now, there is--
It seems backwards.
Right. So right now, there is a competitive grant program where jurisdictions can submit applications to receive funding for, to provide indigent defense services, but they are evaluated on a series of criteria. So it creates some, some jurisdictions are receiving that funding and other jurisdictions aren't. By saying that it's non-competitive, it's saying that all jurisdictions will get money and you don't have to necessarily compete for it or meet certain criteria.
Is there a better word to put in there that if somebody read this, it would make sense?
We can work on that.
The last item I wanted to highlight for you all on the policy statement was in addition around passenger-only ferry, just that the city supports efforts to explore passenger-only ferry service from Kenmore to downtown Seattle. We are expecting the legislature to have a robust discussion on passenger-only ferry. This is flagging it for us to make sure you all are included as part of those conversations.
Do we need to limit it to downtown?
Because I know there was some consideration at one point of to the U District.
Nope. It doesn't need to be limited at all.
Just to Seattle.
Any other questions? Councilmember Curtis?
So mine is not a question on a specific issue, but it feels like as we keep adding more and more things, are we diluting our message? It feels like we've been, in general, very focused and fairly successful, and as we keep adding things, I fear that the message might get diluted and lost.
If you were adding items to your legislative agenda, I would share that concern with you. The policy document is intended to be a lengthier document that includes any and all issues. We have some clients that have 20-page-long policy documents. But again, the purpose of the policy document is to provide us and your city staff with guidance on how you'd like us to engage on all of these other issues. When these issues come up, we're certainly going to be interacting with your local legislative delegation on them. We'll also be interacting with the legislators that sit on the relevant committees, which may or not, may or may not include your local legislators. So there's two different audiences for these documents, really, and as long as your legislative agenda remains concise, the policy document can be added to so that we're really working on all of the items that you all care about.
This really saves time during the legislative session. So Shelley and Brianna, if they see like, oh, there's a, there's a bill up for hearing at a committee on a certain day, instead of needing to call us, say, should we sign in in support of this? This gives them guidance.
Or sign in against.
Or just--
The other way, too.
Other way, too.
This way, we're giving them guidance so if they see stuff, they can, they can act.
Any other questions for us on the legislative agenda or policy document?
I see the city manager.
Well, I, we just really enjoy working with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. They're a great firm and they've done a lot of great work, and we've seen tremendous success with, from all the work they've done, so much so that I think we should invite them to stay through the city manager budget message tonight. What do you think?
As a reward, yes.
With that, I want to offer--
I think they put in a few hours today. They deserve--
I think the mayor gets the brownie points instead of the city manager. Just as a heads up of, in terms of what's occurring between now and the beginning of the legislative session, we do have a meeting scheduled with the legislative delegation on October 26th to go over your legislative agenda with them, and then we're working to schedule your pre-session kickoff event on either January 7th or January 8th. We're still kind of working to navigate the schedules of our legislative delegation. So that's the events you can expect between now and then. And of course, we've got the October 22nd Local Government Committee, we've got House and Senate Committee Days, so we'll be hard at work, but wanted to make sure that you were aware of those two upcoming events.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to say goodnight.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to take action?
Yes. So--
Well, we do have some minor tweaks that were tossed out.
Yes, we do. So we've got a list of those tweaks, right?
Yes.
So we can either make a motion to approve the City of Kenmore's 2019 to 21 state legislative agenda, or we can have it brought back to approve of the changes. So we can either approve it with changes or have it bring us back to us. So are you comfortable approving with the changes?
I'd almost rather just have it come back under consent so we can at least read it.
Fine. Yep. Bring it back in on consent.
That's totally okay. Wouldn't expect it.
So yeah, just go ahead and make the changes and put it on consent and we'll read it over.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Now, what we've all been waiting breathlessly for.
No, we're not there yet.
No, no, no. No, that's right. No, one more. Direct staff on preferred process for filling the four open positions on the Planning Commission effective 1/1 of 19 and consider whether changes to the Planning Commission rules are needed.
I feel badly that I'm not the thing you were waiting for, but anyway, hello again. So I am here today because at the end of this year, four of the Planning Commission positions, the terms are up. And so we had one, in fact, you all received the email from Chair Nugent, who said that he was not interested in reappointment. We've heard from Mark Orangeall that he is interested in reappointment. The other two commissioners, we're uncertain. They have not gotten back to us on their interest in continuing. So because of that, and because we need to interview for at least one position, and because we don't have a pool of planning commissioners, which we typically have, so that if there's a midterm vacancy, we can move someone into the position, we are recommending that you hold interviews. We would advertise almost immediately and hold the interviews at the beginning of December, and we're suggesting that you interview for all the positions, all four positions, and that if existing commissioners are interested in continuing, that they apply. Then you would select the four commissioners and establish the pool. So that's the primary thing that we're asking for tonight. We could also talk about rules for the Planning Commission, but I know you have a really heavy agenda following this piece of the agenda, and so you may wish to defer that conversation to a later time. So we're looking for direction.
Councilmember Marshall.
Where would we advertise?
I'm not sure. Certainly, the Bothell Kenmore Reporter, social media. Probably historically, we last advertised three years ago, and I'm not sure what the list looked like, but the typical places, the newspaper, social media, certainly word of mouth, hopefully.
Yeah, I would encourage all of us to reach out to specific individuals and encourage them to apply, especially if we're looking for some diversity.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, well, I don't want to get into a discussion that'll last us all night about what we might want our future planning commission to look like. I do hope that we diversify the membership a bit, and that's nothing against the current Planning Commission. They're great, great people, but they generally fit into a pretty tight demographic. And I think we should be trying to look for some younger folks, some people of color if we can, and possibly even some renters because we have a growing renting population. We need to get as many different viewpoints instead of just, you know, middle-aged homeowners. We need to have a diversity of viewpoints on the Planning Commission, and I hope that we're able to, to spark some interest.
Along those lines, that made me think of how we're advertising, and we may want to specifically have leaflets in some of the multifamily. I'm just thinking of the developments that are over here, Main Street, and various other ones that are fairly close to here. And, you know, we may want to be more assertive with that.
So the main question, do you want us to advertise for all four?
Do you want to advertise for all four positions or only a fewer number? Deputy Mayor.
So, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That other guy. Yeah, he's getting like, so if we advertise for four positions and two of the people say they would like to stay on, then we may or may not choose them.
Correct.
Is there a time limit? Like, we should say, will you tell us within a week? Because somehow it seems like to throw perfectly good people away who've invested some time, it takes a while on the Planning Commission to get up to speed, to really understand what's going on and how you solve problems. So I guess I'd like to give them a chance to say yes or no before we go for--
Yeah, they have had a chance to say yes or no. We first contacted them a couple of weeks ago, and then we've had a couple of follow-up contacts. So, and again, we've heard from Chair Nugent that he is not interested in being reappointed. Commissioner Orangeall is interested, and the others, we have not had a definitive response from.
In general, I like our approach of interviewing as many people as apply. You know, if we have 12 or 15 people, great. And whether it's for two positions or four positions, it really doesn't matter because eventually we sort of use the initial folks, and then over time, we bring in the others. So most people eventually get a chance to serve if they're interested. So--
Councilmember Smith.
That's sort of what my thought process was, too, is that I, we probably wouldn't need to advertise how many openings we would have. We could just say, we are looking for new planning commissioners. Do you want to apply? And then, or, I mean, it's a little more involved than that, but I'd say it would be nice to have a slate of people that, just like we tapped into, I think it was Scott McDonald, who wasn't originally appointed, and then he filled in because he was like the next one on the list.
Right. That's historically how we've used the pool.
Yeah, so I'd say let's, I think it would be good. I don't necessarily feel like we'd have, I'd feel a need to re-interview the council member or the planning commissioners that want to be reappointed, but if you feel it's, or the council feels it's necessary, that's fine.
I think it only proves awkward because we haven't heard from the two commissioners. Certainly, if they reapplied, it's not like a voluminous college application. So if they were interested and wanted to continue, we certainly could select them because of their experience. I think that's an opportunity.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Curtis that we should just get as big of a pool as we can, and if people want to stay on, I have no objection to that at this point. We don't have anybody who's been on there for an ordinate amount of time, but I do think we need to come back and revisit how long we want people to serve and, yeah, and how static we kind of keep the commission going forward. But I think going forward, the folks that are there, if they want to hang around, I welcome the service, so.
So I think, am I hearing that you want us, so the remaining two commissioners, Commissioner Vanderland has been on the commission for 12 years, and Commissioner Olson, I think, has been on maybe just for one term. So are you, I think what I'm hearing is we'll go ahead and advertise, we'll plan to hold interviews, but I should not suggest that the existing commissioners need to apply if they wish to continue? Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, I think that's what you're hearing, but I think you should set a date certain with them to make their intentions known, because otherwise, we need to get them filled, so.
All right.
And if they don't get back to us by a date, you know, by, I don't know what it is, Thanksgiving or sometime in December, then, then we need to move forward.
All right. So we will advertise. I will give a date certain to the commissioners that we haven't heard from. If they're interested in reappointment, we will assume they will be reappointed, and then if we have not heard from them, then that will be part of the interview process.
Councilmember Danuski.
I am fine with that, but I'd also be fine with re-interviewing as well since there are so many council members that haven't even interviewed, you know, somebody who's been on for 12 years. So I guess I could go either way, but I'd be fine with re-interviewing as well.
Now I'm confused.
Well, if you're speaking--
I said I was okay with it.
Yeah, but then I saw heads nodding over here, so. Well, if you're speaking on behalf of the newbies, I mean, I'm very familiar with them, having served with them, so I'm very comfortable not having to interview them. I do, I'm not clear, though, if we are coming back to the issue of tenure and diversity at some point.
Yes, I think that would be the proposal.
Okay.
Not tonight.
But not tonight. Okay, good.
All right. You got direction?
Yes, we're going to give them a date certain, and if whoever wants to be reappointed, will be reappointed, and then we'll fill the remaining positions through an advertisement and interviews.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. See, I was so excited about this next one that I jumped the gun on it. What we've all been waiting for, the city manager's budget measure, a message of 2019 and '20, the preliminary budget, to be distributed at the meeting. It's all in front of us. So we're waiting breathlessly for your letter.
Yeah, so as you know, we have a biennial budget. It's a two-year budget, and-- And so what we have in front of you is we're the budget book in all of its glory. And so at this point, we'll entertain a motion to adopt. Oh, no? Oh, we've got some work to do, is that what you're saying?
I didn't hear a second.
Well, I didn't hear anybody make the motion. That was eligible to make a motion.
Well, I know I'm a kind of a city budget nerd, but this is really exciting stuff for me. And it's been a pleasure working with my coworkers, especially Joanne Gregory, to put this document together. It's over 300 pages. And I was talking to a small business owner here in Kenmore a week or so ago and told him that we were preparing a 300-page budget. And he looks at me and he goes, "That's 299 more pages than my budget." So I said, "Well, welcome to the public sector." What I'd like to do is turn your attention to the city manager budget message, which is on page three of the book in front of you. And I do plan on reading much of that this evening. After I'm done going through the city manager budget message, I'd like to turn some time over to Joanne Gregory to go over a few items, a few highlights, especially revenues. And then from there, we'll let you take some quality reading time over the next few weeks to really dive into the materials. And then we will have workshops starting next week on the various departments and funds for the budget. So with that, I'll just dive into the budget message. Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council, we are pleased to present the proposed biennial budget for the years 2019 and 2020. As we near the completion of the second decade in the 21st century, I am amazed to see how far Kenmore has come and all that has been accomplished since Kenmore Incorporated in 1998. The celebration of 20 years of cityhood this past year was fantastic. And our community's enthusiasm for and pride in Kenmore was palpable. Public safety services, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, parks and recreation, access to the waterfront, sense of place and community, control of our destiny, and much more have seen improvements by leaps and bounds since incorporation 20 years ago. And these improvements do not go unnoticed or unappreciated. Thanks to your leadership and direction, as well as the support of our citizens, we look forward to Kenmore's next 20 years with great anticipation and excitement. Given the ambitious goals you have set, we have our work cut out for us. And we are up to the task. Target Zero, walkways and waterways, Lake Point, bus rapid transit, economic development, affordable housing, and providing essential city services will ensure that there will never be a dull moment here at City Hall. This proposed budget allocates resources towards your council goals while still providing significant funding to basic and core services such as police, criminal justice, parks, surface water maintenance, land use planning, and protecting our natural environment. As costs for existing services continue to rise faster than operating revenues, it has become increasingly challenging to produce a balanced budget. Eventually, we will need to have a broader discussion with the community about the structural revenue problem that many bedroom communities like Kenmore face. I will discuss our budget picture later in this document. But the positive news is that we are proposing a balanced budget that allocates resources to provide important projects and services that will make a positive difference in the lives of our residents. Budget highlights. This budget is goal and priority-driven. The City Council, as the elected representatives of the citizens of Kenmore, have adopted a set of major goals, and these goals are on your screen. And because you have set these and you know them well, I won't read all of them. And in addition to council goals, we can look to a set of value-based criteria called priority-based budgeting results. Like council goals, these were set by the City Council early on in the budgeting process. And these results include, and I'm down at the bottom of page four, top of page five, and I'll just mention a couple of them. Examples of these results include prosperous and vibrant community, safe and secure community, sustainable, healthy environment, and others, including good governance. Middle of page five. Using the above results, priority-based budgeting provides a systematic way of looking at the budget through a new lens, as PBB founder Chris Fabian says. Through PBB or priority-based budgeting, we identify, define, and assign a cost to all of our city programs. The cost of each program is all-inclusive, including staff time. Once the programs are identified and costed, they are all scored using the results listed above. Scoring involves department self-scoring and peer review scoring by other departments. And programs are then ranked by their score and assigned to quartiles, then quantified by cost in those quartiles. And more on this later. In addition to council goals and priority-based budgeting, our other guides in the budget include your council-adopted policies, such as the 20-year vision statement and your comprehensive plan, as well as more specific policies, such as the Target Zero resolution. Using the city's goals, priority-based budgeting results in other adopted policies to guide the way. The proposed budget allocates resources towards advancing these goals and policies. With all of these goals, results, and policies in mind, I prefer to capture our work and all that we do for the city in the following statement. Kenmore is on an upward trajectory of becoming. All of our programs, tasks, and daily work are toward that end, helping Kenmore move upward toward its potential. Much of the work we do prevents human suffering, and a large portion of our work facilitates fulfillment and happiness. Protecting and improving our natural resources will also help propel Kenmore forward. And we are allocating resources accordingly. We are inevitably connected to our natural environment. And the healthier our rivers and wildlife habitat, the better off we are as humans, as a community. And more on this subject later. Kenmore's upward trajectory doesn't happen overnight. It takes place one small step, one tiny drop at a time. All of these seemingly small daily efforts add up over time. And I refer to this process as... We... Relentless incrementalism. Sorry, I forgot I didn't have a slide on that. Relentless incrementalism. We need to stay focused and relentlessly pursue our goals day in and day out. We must not give up or lose focus. Just as a child grows to adulthood, we may not be able to see noticeable differences from day to day. But added up over one year or five years, the improvements are very noticeable and impressive. On this upward journey, we need to make sure to concentrate on our vision while celebrating successes along our way. While everything, while very rewarding in the end, sustaining that upward trajectory through relentless incrementalism is not and will not be easy. In fact, making progress usually means doing hard things. Walkways and waterways, Lake Point, the West Sammamish River Bridge, downtown redevelopment, alleviating the homeless crisis, improving the water quality of our rivers and the lake. None of those things are easy. They're hard. But I know we have an amazing community and a strong city team that keep us on that upward momentum. We have done it, and we can do it. Of the many meaningful and important services and projects that will propel us upward in the next biennium, I would like to highlight the following. Pedestrian and bicycle safety, walkways and waterways, Lake Point, water quality and riparian habitat restoration, downtown sense of place, public works, including the in-house transition, organizational health, affordable housing and human services, pavement preservation, recreation coordination, and geographic information system. For the sake of time, I'm going to let you use, or let you read the Target Zero narrative. Not that it's not important, it's your number one priority, but you know it well. Also, with walkways and waterways, I want to just mention here that we're making progress. And go to the bottom of page eight. Staying within the project budgets and delivering what was described in the bond measure is proving to be a challenge. Construction costs in the region have jumped in recent years even more so than was predicted in the pre-bond measure cost estimates. The good news is that we have identified potential grants and other sources of revenue that should supplement the funding provided for by the Walkways and Waterways Bond. These additional resources should help us deliver what our residents voted for. We are also looking ahead to the operational costs that the Walkways and Waterways projects will bring when they do come online in the early to mid 2020s. By bringing on our public works, maintenance, operations in-house, I believe we will see efficiencies that will allow us to use our maintenance resources more efficiently. That said, we need to plan for additional resources and the Walkways and Waterways projects when they're complete. On Lake Point, again, I'll let you read most of it there. But towards the bottom, the last sentence of the third, from the last paragraph, "Lake Point can be a true waterfront village right here in the heart of our city." As I said, however, getting there is far from easy. How to mitigate traffic and other impacts, and how to close the gap caused by the extraordinary costs will be the major obstacles. But I believe we are further along than we were two years ago, especially with the completion of the Financial Pro forma report. I believe our audacious man-on-the-moon goal that we set in 2013 is still achievable. And that is to see Lake Point break ground by the year 2023. We'll continue to work with the developer and engage consultants that will be reimbursed by the developer. Top of page 10, surface water quality and riparian habitat restoration. Protecting our natural resources and our environment is another very important city mission. And this budget includes resources dedicated to improving the quality of our wetlands, streams, rivers, and the lake, as well as the surrounding tree canopy and wildlife habitats that depend on those natural resources. In 2018, we began the process to update our critical areas and shoreline regulations. And we hope to wrap that up in the first half of 2019. These changes will bring our codes up to date with the latest science and changes at the state level. Beyond regulatory changes, we will be working to leverage the resources of the nonprofit sector to perform riparian habitat restoration along the banks of the Sammamish River. In partnership with our upstream cities, we have been in communications with Forterra to begin an initiative to remove invasive weeds and replace them with native plants along the river, similar to the very successful effort that Forterra recently led on the Cedar River. As for our daily surface water operations, due to increasing surface water requirements from the state, as well as rising workload demands from more drainage facilities come online to inspect and maintain, I am proposing to add a second surface water technician to the 2019-2020 budget. This position will be funded by revenue from newly developed properties as well as a proposed surface water rate increase. The justification for that added resource continues on page 10 and through page 11. And how to pay for that additional resource, you'll find on page 12. If you go to the last paragraph on page 12, even with the additional resources as proposed above, that new surface water tech, our waterways will continue to be in distress thanks to regional forces from outside of Kenmore and beyond our immediate control. As required by the state and federal governments, our surface water staff monitor bacteria and other contaminants in Swamp Creek. Measured by bacteria levels in Swamp Creek far exceed the state's standards, as shown in the following graph. You can see that on your screen. Measured levels of bacteria in Swamp Creek are more than triple the state standard. The main source of these high levels come from fecal coliform, a form of bacteria that generally originates in the intestines of warm-blooded animals. In particular, we believe that pet waste is a contributor to the unhealthy bacteria levels. Also there on your screen is a picture of our surface water manager, Richard Sawyer, taking a water sample from Swamp Creek. Fecal coliform is only one type of pollutant. There's other pollutants impacting our rivers and streams. And as the downstream city, Kenmore needs to continue to take a regional approach in combating the pollution of our waterways. In addition to our many outreach, inspection, enforcement efforts to our own residents and businesses, we need to keep this problem at the forefront of our upstream neighbors. Only a team approach at the regional level will put a dent in this problem. Given the high importance of our natural resources and the mandate to protect them, as well as the regional approach needed to combat waterway pollution problems head-on, I am proposing to elevate and somewhat broaden the surface water function in our organization. As a result, the surface water manager will start reporting directly to me. And I am proposing a new title of environmental services manager. This position will still be at the manager level. And the duties of the position will include not only surface water management, but also protection of the broader environment, including air quality and wildlife habitat. This position will coordinate with upstream neighbors and other agencies on projects such as the Sammamish River Restoration, waterway pollution reduction, and other joint ventures that require regional cooperation. With these organizational changes and proposed resources, I am confident we can meet the increasing workload demands and the state and federal surface requirements while doing an even better job of protecting our natural resources right here in Kenmore. On downtown sense of place, it's been a thrill to see downtown redevelopment occur, including the 2003 plan that so many people put so much work into come to fruition. The new town square and the hangar and the bull's eye of our downtown are more than meeting our expectations. And over this next biennium, I think the key is for us to keep that momentum going and to keep it successful. We'll continue to support other downtown redevelopment, including the Seaplane Restaurant that's going to be opening soon, and also the Flyway Building right next to the hangar to get under construction in the next few months. Also, new sidewalks and landscaping at the top of page 15 have also added to our downtown walkability and sense of place, including the recently built sidewalks on 68th Avenue and 181st Street. Adding to the sidewalk network and keeping our downtown clean and well-maintained will continue to be key ingredients in creating an attractive, walkable city core. On the public works transition, for the many years we have contracted with the city of Lake Forest Park for public works, maintenance services, such as landscape maintenance, road repair, and surface water maintenance. For a new city, this partnership with Lake Forest Park worked well for Kenmore. However, as citizen requests for services and competing demands between the two cities have increased over the last two decades, the partnership has not worked as well in recent years. As a result, last May, the city of Lake Forest Park notified us they will no longer be providing maintenance services to the city of Kenmore after 2018. We appreciate the service that Lake Forest Park has provided, and we look forward to having our own in-house crew. Creating a new in-house maintenance crew will be no small chore. We're already ramping up to make it happen. And we have a plan in place to be ready to go by the end of this year. We presented an in-house plan to you in August. And at an operating level, we expect to provide the same or better services for less cost than we've been paying to Lake Forest Park. However, we will need to locate and fund a permanent site and build a public works facility that will serve our needs long-term. This public works facility has recently been added to your adopted capital improvement plan and capital facilities plan. Our main goals for the in-house public works transition are twofold. Number one, stand up our new in-house operation in December of 2015 and be in full service of January of 2019. And number two, locate a site for public works facility. The most important part of standing up that operation will be to hire new employees. And you've approved those employees, and they're listed here. The above new positions will be funded from the savings realized from no longer contracting with Lake Forest Park. The above new positions will be funded from the savings realized from no longer contracting with Lake Forest Park. We have our work cut out for us as we transition to an in-house public works operation, and I look forward to the improved local control and service level that will result. In addition to the changes resulting from the in-house transition, I'm also proposing the elimination of the public works director position. As a result, three public works division managers will report directly to me, public works operations manager, city engineer, and environmental services manager. Some of the salary savings from the public works director position will be used in 2019 to hire a temporary consultant who will help us with the in-house transition and other needs in public works. I'm also proposing a limited-term project engineer to assist with capital projects for the next several years. With the elimination of the public works director position and the resulting shift in workload, we will need resources to manage our robust capital program, including the West Sammamish River Bridge Project in 2019 through 2021. This project engineer position will be funded mostly by the revenues from the capital projects. Organizational health, a really important topic, and if you can just bear with me here, we're getting closer to the end than you might think. Here in Kenmore, we place a high value on customer service. When we picture our customers, we typically think of those for whom we provide city services, permit applicants, taxpayers, businesses, visitors, et cetera. We also have another very important set of customers known as internal customers. These internal customers are our city employees, our coworkers. When we are providing great internal customer service within our organization, the desired result is known as employee engagement or high morale. In their book, Lead with Your Customer, Mark David Jones and J. Jeff Coburn assert that world-class organizations view their employees as internal customers. Coburn and Jones emphasize the importance of internal customer service and resulting employee engagement by asserting that organizations cannot achieve external customer loyalty without first achieving internal customer loyalty. Starbucks CEO Howard Schultz understood this concept well. Quote, "We built a Starbucks brand first with our people, not with our consumers," Schultz said in his 1997 book, Pour Your Heart Into It. Back in the 1980s and 1990s, Starbucks led the way in offering health insurance benefits to its part-time employees. Schultz knew that investing first in his employees would result in company loyalty as well as passion for the product and the service they provide. So too should we create an environment where our coworkers are highly valued and where we give each other the best internal customer service. Doing so results in high employee engagement, which produces outstanding external customer service and even more passion for our mission and the services we provide. A key component of taking care of our internal customers is compensating them fairly and competitively. In this region and market, it's easy to lose good people to other cities and the private sector. With average household income going up in the region, combined with rising housing and other costs, we need to keep our coworkers whole and prevent them from losing financial ground. Once every two years, as a part of the biennial budget preparation, we conduct a salary study to assess whether the city's salary ranges are competitive with comparable cities in the area, and we make the necessary adjustments in those ranges to stay competitive. We also recommend an annual wage adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index for the Seattle area. For 2019, we are recommending a CPI-based wage adjustment of 3.6%, and we are forecasting a CPI wage adjustment of 3.5% in 2020. Our benefits package, health insurance, retirement, those sorts of things, is also an important part of the compensation, and we have stayed competitive amidst the significant changes in healthcare over the past decade. The next couple of paragraphs talk about how healthcare benefits have changed and how we've kept up with those changes. In addition to fair compensation, a pillar of strong employee engagement and resulting passion for service is having a clear service vision established with accompanying values and agreed-upon behaviors that go with each of those values. This last year, we worked together as an organization to create a service vision along with agreed-upon values and behaviors. This service vision, values, and behaviors we established are as follows, and you can see it there. Our service vision that we, as the employees of Kenmore, created is "Propelling Kenmore Upward: We Create a Thriving Community and We Help People Love Where They Live." And you can also see the values and behaviors there on page 17. I won't go through them in detail, but our values are safety, integrity, courteous, proactive, collaborative. And each one of these has behaviors that go with it. The service vision and accompanying values and behaviors shown above serve as a strong base in moving toward the results that we are striving to achieve: high morale, employee engagement, and outstanding customer service. Speaking of organizational health, management expert Patrick Lencioni makes the distinction between smart organizations and healthy organizations. In his book, The Advantage, Lencioni asserts that while it's great to have smart people working in your organization, it's even more important to have a healthy organization where internal politics are minimized, trust is maximized, and constructive conflict is frequent. He says, "The seminal difference between successful companies and mediocre or unsuccessful ones has little, if anything, to do with what they know or how smart they are. It has everything to do with how healthy they are." And he also says, "An organization that is healthy will inevitably get smarter over time. Without politics and confusion getting in their way, they cycle through problems and rally around solutions much faster than their dysfunctional and political rivals do." Because of the success it produces and the employee fulfillment it generates, organizational health will continue to be a top priority of mine, and it starts at the management level." And this next paragraph talks about how I'll be working with the management team on that long-haul journey. Top of page 19, affordable housing and human services. While our regional economy is booming, we are aware of many who are not realizing the benefits or who are being hurt by the economic growth. Thanks to rising rents and home prices, many are finding it more difficult to reside within a reasonable commute to where they work, and regional homelessness is on the rise. Human services funding requests remain steady, and the need for assistance is stronger than ever. During the last biennial budget cycle, we received or we reviewed human service funding levels of other cities in the area, and the city council established $7.53 per capita as the size of the city's human services grant budget. Setting a per capita amount allows the funding to grow with the city's population. Using the same per capita rate for the 2019-2020 human services funding cycle and assuming a population of 22,920, the proposed human services budget is 172,000 per year or 345,000 for the biennium. The next couple paragraphs talk about the applications we received. Affordable housing is another area of great need, and Lori Anderson has done some great analysis that I incorporated into this budget message. This chart you see right next, if you don't mind. It shows the average Kenmore Bothel rent relative to affordability thresholds for those making 50% of the King County median income and those making 80% of the King County median income. The next chart shows average sales prices, and I'll summarize both of them in a second. The next chart shows average sales prices for all residents, including condos in Kenmore and King County relatively affordable affordability threshold for those making the King County median income. Both charts illustrate that rental and ownership housing are unaffordable to low-income households here in Kenmore. The next several paragraphs provide further analysis on that and the need for regional approaches, including our partnership with Arch. I'm proposing that we continue to be a member of Arch, and normally, we've been contributing 30,000 a year for their capital trust fund. I'm proposing that on a temporary basis that we increase our contribution to 60,000 per year for both 2019 and 20. And I'm proposing that this increase in funding, this doubling in funding, be paid for out of the Strategic Opportunities Fund. The next paragraph talks about our partnership with Mary's Place and the effectiveness of that. Pavement preservation. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read all this, but if, Joanne, if you could pull that up. Yeah, thank you. While our pavement rating of 78 is pretty good compared to other cities, we also had a consultant provide recommendations on our pavement management program. The report concluded that if we want to maintain our pavement rating and avoid the slippery slope of deferred maintenance, we need to be investing much more funding into asphalt preservation than we are now, and a lot more than our current plan for future years allocates. How much more? Well, you've heard the number. Right now, we're at a current level of about 500,000 per year, and the consultant that we hired recommended a funding level of 2.6 million a year to stay current with our current pavement rating. Does it really matter how much we invest in our roads, and what does it hurt to delay or postpone asphalt preservation? The following graph, this graph in front of you, shows what happens to a road's condition over time. After about 10 years of life, a road's condition drops off sharply with each passing year. The more time goes by without applying a preservation treatment to a road, the cost to restore the road rises exponentially. It boils down to pay me now or pay me a lot more later. Taking good care of our roads is analogous to maintaining wood siding on a house. It's a lot easier and less expensive to keep the siding painted as opposed to not painting it and letting the siding rot and require replacement. This next paragraph talks about how to find $2 million a year, and it really has to do with our funding system and the structural brokenness that I've alluded to. And I'll talk about a little bit later in the budget picture. Lastly, or second to last, I think, yeah, second to last is recreation coordination. We are extremely fortunate to have amazing co-creator citizens who bring the community together through recreational and other community activities. Rather than waiting for the city or others to produce recreational opportunities, these wonderful people generously sacrifice their time and resources to bring fun and healthy resources to the community, healthy programs to the community. Examples of these co-creators include our youth sports league volunteers and those who produce our paddling and rowing programs through the Kenmore Waterfront Activities Center. When it comes to recreation services, Kenmore has generally followed the model of allowing the private and nonprofit sectors to provide the programming while the city provides the facilities, and you can see some examples there. This model of the city providing public facilities to leverage the resources and partnership opportunities with local nonprofits and other groups has generally worked well. An exception to this partnership model that we've used is special community events. When it comes to community events, we've tended to take an in-house role in directly producing special events, things like Why I Love Kenmore and the movies and the concerts. In recent years, more co-creators have come forward with new recreational opportunities for the community, which is absolutely fantastic. Examples include the new KAWAC programs and a new partnership with the school district to provide crew as a sport for high school students. The city programming of special events has also increased with the recent new offerings of the summer movies at the town square. While the programming offered by the community is wonderful and encouraged, it does require coordination with the city. This coordination between the city and the various recreational groups is somewhat decentralized among the city departments, which allows us to share the workload without placing the entire burden on one person or one department. While this decentralized approach works okay, it's not without drawbacks, including citizen confusion about which department to talk to and keeping the left hand informed about what the right hand is doing. One approach to address these issues and increase the level of service to the public is to allocate resources to create a new recreation coordinator position. A new recreation coordinator with the training and experience that goes with the position could provide a less piecemeal and more holistic approach to recreation coordination and also bring city-sponsored recreation to a more professional level, including improved public information on the website and printed materials. And below is a list of recreation functions that a recreation coordinator could perform, and I'll let you read those on your own. Note in that scenario where we provide a new recreation coordinator, we would still continue to partner with community groups and still follow the model where we're leveraging the resources of the community to provide the services. The annual cost of a full-time recreation coordinator, including salary and benefits, would be approximately 85,000 to 95,000 a year. Given how existing general fund operating costs are rising faster than our operating revenues and recognizing that pavement preservation is underfunded, I'm recommending that we not add a recreation coordinator to the budget at this time. However, I suggest that we use existing resources to fulfill two of the functions listed above. Number one, create and post a list of recreation providers on the website, and number two, produce a recreation guide. We can adjust some of the priorities of our communication specialist and ask her to accomplish these two tasks. Much of the work will be one-time in nature as the list and recreation guide are initially created and produced. Geographic information systems. I'll leave this to your reading pleasure. We do think there is a strong need for augmenting what we're already doing, and we'll definitely be discussing that as we continue the budget workshops in the coming weeks. I do want to spend a little bit of time here on the budget picture, and then I'll wrap up. While Kenmore is blessed to be part of a strong regional economy here in the Seattle area, we need to be cautious and conservative when forecasting our financial future. Nationally and regionally, we are seeing almost unprecedented low unemployment and other strong economic indicators. Yet, we're also seeing signs that we may be on the latter end of the current economic expansion cycle, and you'll see a quote there that talks about how long our cycle has lasted. Other signs, such as the recent decline of home sales, the flattening of the treasury bond yield curve, and what some people are calling the everything bubble, are pointing to possible recession in the next one to two years. As a result, our revenue estimates are conservative for the 2019-20 biennium, especially in forecasting our economically elastic revenues. Sales tax, for example, is considered elastic because it tends to rise and fall with the economy. We are predicting a 5% decline in sales tax in 2019 compared to what we are projected to collect in 2018, and then no growth in sales tax in 2020, and you can see those numbers there. Another relatively elastic source of funds in Kenmore's general fund is development permit fee revenue. The following graph shows the last 10 years of permit fee revenue plus projections for the next biennium. 2018 shows a 10-year high in development fee revenue. However, given development projects in the permit pipeline and what we know about remaining developable land here in Kenmore, we are predicting a decline in this particular revenue category. So here's the challenge. All general revenues for the next biennium are substantial and provide much-needed resources for the city to provide important services such as police, criminal justice, parks, and road maintenance, et cetera. However, as I mentioned earlier in this budget message, we need to be funding pavement preservation at a much higher level, and we need to be looking ahead to the maintenance costs of the walkways and waterways projects. And if that wasn't enough, we have structural financial challenges that Kenmore and other bedroom community face in Washington State. The structural financial challenge is simple. Even with no increase in staffing or new programs, operating revenues are not keeping pace with operating expenditures. There are several There are several reasons for this phenomenon. On the revenue side, we're seeing limits on state-imposed limits on revenue growth, including the one percent limit on property tax. And we are experiencing flat or declining revenues in some categories such as utility taxes. And thirdly, under the revenue category, the state's rules on revenue distribution penalize bedroom communities like Kenmore. To illustrate this point, the following graph shows how the local share of sales tax is distributed to Kenmore and our neighboring cities. For cities like Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, the above phenomenon, as shown in the graph, is known as sales tax leakage. For example, Kenmore residents travel to Woodinville to shop and pay sales tax, but the reverse doesn't happen at nearly the same rate. In fact, Woodinville collects more than five times the local sales tax that Kenmore does per capita. Up until approximately twenty years ago, the state recognized this disparity between sales tax-rich and poor cities and provided the sales tax-poor cities like Kenmore with sales tax equalization funds to make up for the leakage of sales tax. This practice ended with the passage of Initiative 695 in the late nineteen-nineties, leaving a big hole in the budgets of bedroom communities across the state. On the expenditure side of the equation in defining this challenge or this problem, costs beyond our control continue to arise, including the costs of unfunded mandates. For example, cities are required to take on a share of voter registration costs incurred by the King County Elections Division. Kenmore's share of this cost has seen a seventy-six percent increase since 2011. Kenmore has no control over this cost and does not see a corresponding revenue increase to go with it. Costs of labor, materials, and contracts continue to be on the rise. Earlier this year, we told you about an increase in the prevailing wage rate for landscape workers that more than doubled. Another example is the rising costs in our public safety services. With no increase in public safety service and no new programs, Kenmore's police costs are projected to rise by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Now, you could say, oh, we have control of that cost. Well, short of cutting police officers, we actually don't. Third-party arbitrators ultimately decide how much our police officers are paid. One more example of rising costs is our construction costs, and you can see those numbers there, including the price per ton of asphalt and what that's been doing over the last few years. To summarize our key budget challenges, we need to address the following three issues. The fact that our operating costs, status quo, are rising faster than operating revenue, fully funding pavement preservation, and planning for the additional maintenance resources when the walkways and waterways projects are complete in the early to mid 2020s. So finding a solution. While the problem appears to be simple, which is revenues rising faster than expenditures, the solution is not. Growing our way out of the problem through new development won't work because, number one, growth is slow and incremental, and, number two, you still have to service those areas that are developing. While I would prefer that the state save the day by more fairly distributing sales tax and easing up on unfunded mandates, the solution will most likely be a combination of cutting services and raising taxes and fees. Over the next year, I recommend that we have a conversation with the community about both sides of the equation. On the revenue side, we can discuss revenue options such as banked capacity and property tax, and this current budget proposes tapping into that. Utility taxes, our utility taxes appear to be lower than our neighboring cities. And the transportation benefit district, the city currently assesses a twenty dollar per car tax on vehicles. This number, through council authority, can go up to forty and ultimately to fifty dollars per car. With voter approval, you can go to the voters for up to two-tenths of a percent of sales tax for transportation benefit district. And then lastly, having a discussion about a voter-approved levy-lid lift. There are additional revenue options in addition to the above list, and we can develop more, a more comprehensive list when we start the conversation. And when we do discuss revenue options, I would like to consider, at least as a reference point, a concept known as price of government. And I won't go into that theory there. You can read it on your own time. And then there, the last paragraph of page thirty. As with revenues, the expenditure side of the equation will not be easy, especially given that I believe that we are a lean organization that delivers good value for the resources we are given. However, I am hopeful that our priority-based budgeting system will prove to be a useful tool in guiding this discussion. Knowing what our priorities are, how our programs stack up against these priorities, and seeing how our dollars spent in light of these programs' priorities and limited resources will help us make informed decisions when the time comes. Despite the revenue expenditure discussion above, we have a lot to look forward to and still have substantial resources to accomplish great things for the people of Kenmore. For the two-year biennium, we have over thirty million dollars in the operating budgets to maintain and improve quality of life in our city. The following pie chart shows how resources are distributed into our two main operating funds, the general fund and the street fund, and this graph speaks for itself. In conclusion, this biennial budget for 2019 and 2020 is a pleasure to present. It is a status quo budget with a few minor exceptions. That said, we have many meaningful services and projects planned that will sustain and even boost our momentum on Kenmore's upward trajectory of becoming. Our budget is balanced with resources in place to retain professional, high-caliber city staff to get the job done and do hard things. Our focus continues to be on advancing the city council's goals as well as the results identified in our priority-based budgeting process. We look forward to assisting you with your budget deliberations, and we are happy to provide any additional information or answers you may have. I'm grateful for the administration and finance director, Joanne Gregory, and for her leadership and long hours she has put into this budget. I'd also like to acknowledge the efforts of our management team and all my coworkers for the part they have played, not only in preparing this budget, but also for the good work they do on a daily basis to deliver great service and propel Kenmore upward. I also appreciate the city council, their passion for their city, and their direction on goals and priorities, and their vision for the community, all of which are essential to producing a strong budget document and translating it into action. Lastly, none of this would be possible without our wonderful community members who give us the resources and support we need to serve them. Thank you. Sincerely, Rob Carlinzey, City Manager.
So, Rob, thank you for this. Very informative. In the list of proposed revenue sources under funding solution on page twenty-nine, are any of these assumed in your budget already?
No, none of them are.
Any other questions? Comments? Suggestions?
Actually, can I, I do need to mention that we do have, we are tapping into banked capacity.
Well, that's what I thought. That's why I was...
Yes, thank you.
Because you were kind of mixing two. You brought up in our one-on-ones earlier, the bank capacity, but then you kind of put it in with other things that weren't folded in with the budget.
Yeah, for the sake of time, I skipped over that, but I am proposing to tap into some of that banked capacity by increasing property tax by three percent per year for both years of the biennium. So that's the one exception.
Okay. And then I've got a follow-up then on that. You know, throughout, you brought up the pavement preservation issue probably four or five times in there. And so we've talked about quite a bit as a council, and I think we recognize that we need to find a fix for that sooner than later. Can I ask why maybe the TBD wasn't proposed in your initial budget?
Because I think we need to have a community conversation about it, and you need to adopt the budget by year's end, and so I don't think that's enough time to have a community conversation about it.
Okay, thanks.
So actually, on page twenty-one, there's a graph. It's got to do with affordable housing. And you're showing a twelve percent shortage for people making thirty percent, less than thirty percent. Meaning income.
Come here, what page?
Twenty-one. In reality, that number is, I believe, right now, over a hundred and thirty-six thousand homes short. So twelve percent seems very light from what we're seeing. Anyway, anything else?
I'd like to turn some time over to Joanne Gregory. She has a few things to go over, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, we are, we're really happy to get the budget out to you tonight, and I wanted to give you just an overview of how it's laid out in case it's the first budget that I presented to you. To walk you through it real quick, there's a table of contents right in the front, and from there you can find all the departments and the funds and the different discussions. And a reader's guide on page one, which describes the different sections of the budget. So it'll kind of give you a little bit of communications about what you'll find in different sections. When we start meeting with the departments next week, we'll be starting with the general fund and going department by department over the next several weeks and reviewing those particularly, and then moving into the various funds as well. Tonight, I was going to do two things. One, I can't do. One, it's up to you. I was going to start with kind of a discussion of the general fund revenues, but we could do that next week when we talk about the, when we get ready to start the department discussion. And the thing that I can't do, that I was really excited about, was to show you the results of the priority-based budgeting exercise and the outcome of what that looks like. I just can't, I could not get on the website, as hard as I tried this afternoon, to be able to show you, but I'll have that resolved by next week. And it's a really nice graphical interface where you can see the results that you've established and then how those results have played out in our costing and scoring of all the programs that the city offers. And you can really get a good feel for the cost and the personnel makeup of the different programs that the city offers. So we'll incorporate that into our budget discussions when we begin next week. But I didn't know if you, it's, I know it's rather late, and if you'd rather that I get into the general fund revenue to kick it off next week, that would be fine, too.
Next week.
Unless it's ten-thirty, though. Okay. There's agreement about that. Okay. Nope, that'll work. It'll be much fresher next week.
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
I probably should have understood it from the first time you answered this question, but going back to the bank capacity, so there's nine years of bank capacity, is that correct? So three years in each of the next two years, so we'll be doing six percent total over the next two years. I just want to make sure it isn't three percent, and then it's just carried over. It's three plus an additional three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we, the bank capacity that we have before we tap into it is almost six hundred thousand dollars. So it's drawn down, not by number of years that you didn't take it now that you are, but by the value of the percentage that you are taking. So right now, I don't know off the top of my head how much that will lower our bank capacity, but we will still have some, probably about half or a little bit less than half. And I want to let you know, too, if, the budget is on the website, so if you'd rather look at an electronic copy, you may do that, it's easier.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. City manager.
Yeah, no one-on-ones this week, but of course, I'll always make myself available if you have something you need. Looking at the rest of the month, we have council meeting every single Monday for the rest of this month and also on the first Monday in November. Note the special start time and special location of the meeting on the twenty-ninth. We're going to be having a dinner meeting with City of Shoreline, City of Lake Forest Park on the twenty-ninth. I believe it's like a five-thirty start. Five-thirty start time? Well, whatever. And then, but also notice that after that, we'll come back here for a seven-thirty meeting that night to keep talking about stuff. Also notice that you have a council meeting on the twenty-second, which is normal, but I'm also asking for a special executive session on October twenty-third to discuss the performance of a city employee. And it's really important to me that all seven of you come to that, super, super important, that you come to that executive session on the twenty-third. Also, we'll be bringing you the updated homeless shelter ordinance to you next Monday, and it's in the packet. One thing that's changed is you guys, for low barrier, you wanted us to check for felonies but not necessarily for misdemeanors. We found out from the county that they can't distinguish. It's, they just check for both. And so, so we, I think, so I decided to just have the policy be the same for both low barrier, but Councilmember Danuski pointed out to me that we should not let computer systems drive policy and that, and it's Councilmember Danuski's wish that I just still bring it back to you as you have directed. So it'll be felonies only and...
You said that you can't.
Can't. The county system can't distinguish. But rather than letting the system drive our policy, I'm still planning on, I'm going to bring back that policy to you as you directed me to. I need to amend what's uploaded on the internet right now, but that's what I plan on doing. So that's all I have.
Nothing else for a staff report?
No.
Counsel. Comments, reports, initiatives? Councilmember Smith.
Well, I mentioned this once to Rob, our city manager, and I would, I would like to know if it's possible if we can get by with three maintenance workers instead of four. And so I haven't heard anything, but I would, I don't know if there's any interest in the discussion on the peers of the council, but for me, I feel like that's an area in the budget that we are starting from scratch, and I would not be opposed to having staff present us with a scenario on how that could possibly work with hiring three on the maintenance side instead of four.
I'd be interested in hearing that also.
Nothing else to add?
Any objections to talking about during budget? Okay. If we can hear about that, that'd be great. Councilmember Marshall.
Thanks to our city manager for arranging a discussion on the hangar and refining its policies to better comport with the First Amendment. Without going into the details, we had a productive meeting last week with Shelby and Council Don Wright-Han, and looking forward to some revisions of the hangar policies.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubik?
Thank you for the great presentation and it was, even though it was late, it was a very nice, very nice budget. And I assume we're, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I assume we will be discussing most of the things in there in more detail. So, yeah, I don't know that we need to bring them...
Can I clarify that? So the reason I bring it up now is because I know they're in the process of recruiting and hiring, and I would hate to, you know, offer somebody a job and then say, whoops, sorry about that. So that was the only reason it was a time.
And the way we've done this in the past, and it works out quite well, is we... And the way we've done this in the past, and it works out quite well, is we go over each section, we come up with our changes, and we move on to the next section because the first section is done. Councilmember Danuski?
I think I've ended up driving by all of the utility box wraps in the last week, and they're really fun, so if you haven't driven by them, I'm not expecting them, and I see them, and they make me smile, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Couple of small things. Hang on, let me pull up my notes. At the Seashore meeting last Friday, we had an interesting discussion with the road usage charge pilot program, which I'm actually a part of. So I've got a little dongle in my car that tracks my mileage, and I got my first invoice. I would have saved, I think, 90 cents last month doing the road usage charge versus paying the gas tax. And then quite a discussion about what's going to happen with SR99, the VITAC closure, and the tunnel opening, and how that's going to impact and how that's going to happen. It's going to, downtown's going to be a mess for a few years. There's really no way around that, and this is a small part of it. Another thing I'm working on right now, about a month ago on ETP, the chair, Councilmember Susan Bounde Sanders from Woodinville, asked that I kind of chair a subcommittee to work on a legislative agenda for the Eastside Transportation Partnership. I've been working with, just going off the top of my head here, Deputy Mayor Dorr in Bothell, Deputy Mayor Arnold in Kirkland, and then Councilmember Stokes and Councilmember Zahn down in Bellevue, along with Councilmember Bounde Sanders. And we have a draft document that's almost finished that we're going to get out to the rest of the body probably tomorrow or Thursday, tomorrow or Wednesday, and we'll be reviewing that on Friday, and then it'll come out to the various councils for blessings. It's nothing radically different from what ETP has supported before, but you'll all get a chance to look at it in the next few weeks. And then I also went to, last week, I went to a K4C elected body, elected, I don't remember what exactly called it, to get together for elected folks to talk about environmental issues, and they're doing a lot of great work. They've got a wonderful legislative agenda that they're putting together for next year around climate policy and transportation land use, green energy, green buildings. And I will be bringing them up again during budget as a possible budget addition. I hope we can, I hope we can get there on joining them. They're doing some great work, and I'd love for us to join that partnership as we have with Seashore and ETP. And that's what I have for tonight.
I, too, am part of that road usage charge work group, and I got my invoice, my second invoice, and mine was $48.
Were you paid more or less?
More. Yeah, almost up, almost up. It's the mileage, yeah. Anyway, for the sake of brevity, I don't really have anything else tonight. Let's go home. We're adjourned.